Welcome to tonight's City Council Study Session for June 3, 2024. Welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session for June 3, 2024. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats, provided not the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. City Council reports. Mayor Protem.
And so last week I attended the Front Range Passenger Rail Board. One of the updates for that board in process is that the, there was a question as to whether or not there would be a ballot measure placed on this year's ballot for a tax that would pay for the Front Range Passenger Rail. And that has officially been moved on to look at 2026. So we're not going to be doing that ballot for 2024, which that means there should be more time for conversation about what does, what is it paying for? What would that tax be paying for and specifically what kind of service or services is going to be provided along the Northwest Corridor? The first portion of Front Range Passenger Rail is supposed to be Denver to Fort Collins. And that, right now, does not include a station between Denver and Boulder. So it passes through the Westminster-Broomfield-North Jeffco area without stopping. And so there is the opportunity, hopefully, in the next six months to a year in being able to identify really what is, how could Northwest Passenger Rail, i.e. the Peak Rail Service or any type of RTD service that has been promised us for quite a while, for which we have stations with no train? How could that potentially be integrated into the Front Range Passenger Rail Service, whether as some sort of limited service or something? So there's an opportunity there that I don't think we necessarily had as strong of an ability to integrate by being able to move this ballot measure. So I am hopeful but also slightly frustrated.
Thanks for being a pullback.
Yeah.
We need it.
That's, that's all right.
Okay. Counselor Kamau.
The only thing city-wise is I went to the shred-a-thon on Saturday and I believe, I can't remember what place we came in, but I know we raised over $8,000. Eight, I think eight hundred something cars. We got beat pretty good.
Eight hundred and sixty-five.
At Jeffco. So, but it was good. I think in the years that, this was the fifteenth year that Westminster's done it. I think it's probably the tenth year that I've done it. And I have, I've seen it decline over the years, which I think means people are doing more digital stuff, so. But it was good and appreciate all the officers that were out and the citizen alumni that helped us. And then Thornton had their navigators and their PD out helping us. So it was, it was a good, good time, a lot of participation.
Counselor Allen.
So I attended the Historical Board. They're still working on their grant to survey historical homes. I did learn a fact about native prairie grass of Colorado. It hardly exists at all in our state anymore, except for there's a bit down by Peblow and a seed for it is almost nonexistent. So to think that we could take the dog park back to native prairie grass is almost impossible because it doesn't exist. So I thought that was an interesting note that I learned. I also went to the Uplands update. The neighbors are not happy about all the dust. That's how construction goes usually, but they're not, they don't think they're using enough water trucks. They don't think there will be any housing available until late next year into twenty-seven or twenty-six. Next year's twenty-five, twenty-six. There was one woman there looking for housing already. I talked to Tracy Craft Tharp for a long time on the phone about the airport and the concerns there with Green Knolls. I told her that people are scared about the lawsuits with Boulder County and Superior Residence, that the more traffic will go over Westminster. And she told me they should be concerned, which is not good news. She says that they're using the South Runway at night, which has helped some, with some of the noise. And the pilots have been ninety-five percent compliant for the last month. And that's between ten at night and seven in the morning. So she says that should help the noise at night. If you read, Green Knolls was part of Jefferson County when it started. So it wasn't Westminster that approved it. So I thought that was interesting to know.
It's the reason they have no sidewalks.
Right. Well, we don't either, but. So that's what I learned and for now. I'll keep up to date with her, though. Okay.
Thanks. Counselor Carmelia.
Yes, I had a tour on Friday through the Rocky Flats area. That was with the city manager and with our Open Spaces Director and, you know, PRL Director. And I just can't speak highly enough about that tour. That was really eye-opening about how much land we have out there. And we talked about the different species, the flora, the fauna, everything growing out there. And, you know, we talked about the history of some of the old sites of preservation that are still out there, that they're upkeeping. And so it was honestly one of the most informative things I've done so far. And the gentleman from US Fish and Wildlife that guided us through the tour had so much information to give. We saw lots of elk out there. We saw, I mean, it was so picturesque. And I just highly recommend folks to just walk through that land. There's forty thousand acres, so I think it's more land than most of us can wrap our heads around. So that was really incredible. I also visited the new recycling center and I just wanted to mention that because I brought a box that I've been saving for the last two or so years, full of old recycling items. And I had like three humidifiers and an old coffee grinder and lots of stuff. And I thought, you know, we've been talking about the cost. I thought, you know, this is probably going to be fifteen, twenty bucks. We'll see what it is. All of it, it was a box this big, full of stuff. And it was five dollars and sixty cents. And I just want to put that out there because we've been bringing up that cost and, you know, I thought, oh, this will be, you know, at least, you know, twenty. No, it was really nothing at all. So I hope that helps alleviate some of the thoughts and concerns around that. And they were wonderful. They were really friendly. And I also attended the Uplands, but Counselor Ireland gave an update there. I wanted to bring up the emails I saw both today and yesterday. I feel like we got several emails over the weekend around cars being parked with folks perhaps living in them and RVs being parked. And so I haven't responded to those specifically. I know city staff is working on it. But that leads me to a discussion that I happened to have over the weekend with a resident and Counselor Hot was there. And it concerns something that is immediately addressing the needs of the unhoused folks in the area that I mentioned months ago when I first came on. And that is, can we find somewhere legal for folks to park? And can we address that concern? I think that's something we can easily do if we find the right space for it. And I'd like to talk about that. Is there a way we can immediately? I know that we have a lot of discussions to come after the strategic priorities and the budget, but I think that this is something I'd like to just have us put on the agenda to talk about and figure out if we can find a location. There might be a good location over around Seventy Second and Lowell, just a parking lot, if we want to see whether we have the resources to just make it somewhere that folks can go, where we don't have to put the police after them, right? And so I want to talk about that and bring that to the forefront. And then finally, I'll say that there were several attendees that attended coffee on Saturday morning. And so thank you to all the folks who showed up. It was, we had really great discussions. I think we were there for three hours. And we had, I had lots of meetings as well with residents throughout the week, both about the dog park and about, you know, the Greenway Trail. And I'm just really grateful for so much input and I have really learned a lot from all our residents. They've, they've done their homework. And so thank you for that.
For your parking issue, we have churches that are signed up through Colorado and they allow parking in their parking lots. Some of them happen to have showers and things that they're able to give to those folks and they make connections with them. Some of them use that address if they need to be able to get things. So we do have some of those programs.
Thank you.
Can we find out which churches those are?
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, thank you. I've heard that before. And so maybe if our city can like connect or have information or we can help direct them and make sure that that's true, because I heard a church had that and then that they weren't offering it anymore. And so I don't know what's available.
Counselor Hot.
Yeah, I had several meetings with constituents around the dog park, also with Counselor Carmelia. I met with the resident to talk about things we could do immediately for the unhoused. And just piggybacking off of what Counselor Carmelia was saying, it would also alleviate folks parking outside of residences and, you know, with some of the emails that we're getting. But yeah, that's all I have. But thank you.
Counselor Zai.
For me, I'm just double checking. I talked with city manager Freitag. I think our communications folks maybe took every movie in the park and thought we were going to be to everything. That was never my intent. It was to focus on, let's go to different areas. So for just this month, Friday is block party. Do we have at least four people going?
It's Friday, is that?
It's Monday in Historic Westminster. Yes, no, maybe?
I think I was on there.
I'll be there.
I have family coming in.
What time is it at?
Five to seven.
Five to seven at the park there?
Six thirty. Excuse me. Yeah, six thirty. So we have a table there. It's always well-attended. And the next week, they have movie in the park at the high school. We do not need to be there. It is the same crowd. Anybody wants to attend individually, feel free. But I just think with staff time, we need to be strategic getting around the city during the summer. And we don't have to be at every movie. And I know Andy, and I don't have the final date on my calendar, but he's got that last week. He's got us doing a town hall like we did at Makers. And so are people able to attend that?
I was just going to quickly say, I won't be able to attend anything on Fridays likely for the summer because I work at my second job on Friday nights. But this will be the first time I've missed the summer block party and I would highly encourage those of you who are new. That's a good one, very well-attended, great opportunity.
And just to follow up, I'm, I'm going to try to be there. I do have a conflict, but I'm going to try to be there.
Perfect.
But you were asked about the last week.
Yeah, the last week, does anybody have their calendar out, what they, he's got us signed up for?
For a Friday?
No, I think it's a Wednesday or Thursday. It's the same night as Boards and Commissions.
That's the thirteenth, yeah.
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth of. Is the Board and Commission onboarding for June?
So it's the thirteenth of June. Sorry, I was thinking it was later. So what do people's calendars look like for that?
I can do it.
This is for what?
For, I don't know the place we're going to, but it's like what we did at Makers. Where we just sit and talk to people.
I'm putting it down.
I can do that.
It'll work for me. Thursday night?
Yeah.
It's a Thursday night.
Thirteen, yeah.
Thirteen, yeah. I can do it. But will they put it on our calendar?
Yes. I think he, he wrote us something. I just, between the Rocky Flats, I'll tell you about in a second, and some other stuff, I've got over three hundred emails sitting in my email box. So trying to find little Andy's email is, oh, hi.
Hi, Cody Blurb, Assistant to the City Manager. Heritage Church Ranch Listening Session is the opportunity on the thirteenth.
Perfect. And what time does that start?
For fifty-five and older community. He did not give a time, but I can check in to make sure that they get, that gets on calendars.
Tell him to get it on our calendars.
Yeah, because otherwise I won't.
Yeah.
We'll get a hold, maybe two on there, just because it's so.
Yeah, and tell him we've got more than four, so we're good to go. We just need it on our calendars so people know, hold it. And then July twelfth, we've never been way up north to Amherst, they're having a movie in the park. Those are fun, just, and it'll be fun to be in another part of the city. So do people think they can attend that?
What day, I'm sorry?
July twelfth. It's a Friday.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's literally in my neighborhood.
You can walk. I can walk over, ride over.
I can probably go to that, too.
Okay. Perfect. So we're good with that. I just wanted to get focused in for the next month so that we know what we're doing. And I did attend, I had a three-hour meeting today with the Rocky Flat Stewardship this morning. And what they're trying to decide is David Abelson is retiring and DOE wants, Department of Energy wants to know. We've had this stewardship council for years and years and years. We've gone through what they call the cleanup and we're still here. A lot of what North Glen, excuse me, Thornton, us and Broomfield care about is water because the contamination, if anything, comes off of Rocky Flats. So all of the testing and all of that kind of stuff. But what they're looking at is, do we stay as a stewardship council? Do we look at reimagining and have DOE do some things, have Fish and Wildlife do some things? And what, what things do we want to focus on? None of that has been decided. That's three hours' worth of meetings. We'll have another one in September. But let me get to, they talked about signs and everybody wants to be sure that new people coming in and going different places get the right message of what Rocky Flats was all about, so people know. They care about the monthly inspections of the original landfill. They know that there was more than one dumping place, but they at least want that. They talked about the noxious weed control, the revegetation, the monitoring of the Preble's Mouse and the wetland mitigation, talked about the wildlife. And then in the talk about what did people need, North Glen, obviously, water is their concern because we're their only water source. Golden is probably going to opt out of whatever we decide to do, so that's important to know. Boulder also probably will opt out, but stay on a fringe of however DOE decides to report things, whether it's bi-yearly, quarterly, whatever. They still want to be on the list to get that information. Thornton's concerned about dam breaching, water. And everybody, our three hundred emails that we got talk about community engagement, yet when everybody talked about their town halls, their special sessions, whatever, unless there's some things particular on an agenda, nobody has people coming forward to talk about Rocky Flats. So nobody's really sure what kind of engagement and does DOE need to look at that more, not individual cities? So that was a huge discussion. No answers, just sharing all of those topics that were out there. They have us down for a B or a C. B is an expansion of what we really do right now as a stewardship council. C narrows it and like if the core cities that has water at Stanley Lake want to just focus on the water, the monitoring, everything that goes on with that, that's what we would be a part of. And if there's other cities that have other issues, they could, so it could be broken up like that. Again, no decisions made. Broomfield is not sure if they will stay in it or not. And during all of this conversation, it just made me think of, how do we get all of this information? Just which websites? Where can people learn about Rocky Flats history? Do we have those little tags on our website so people have a way to find it easily? So that's one thing we could do as a city, just to make it easier for anybody coming in. So that was three hours' worth of that meeting. And just to update people, since I have been in the hospital for nine days and out and I'm doing well, I'm probably about at seventy percent. It was a rough road. Thanks for all the notes. I didn't get back to everybody because sometimes just sending my kids a yes or a no to their questions was exhausting. But my kidneys shut down and they didn't think they were going to come back. So that's what we were dealing with. And it was all from the second cancer medication I was taking. And when they finally reached me, my blood sugars were over five hundred. And they just were screaming at me on the phone, get to an emergency room now! So anyway, I had two infections. I had all of this other stuff going on. I had to have a central line put in. I had three lines in this arm, one line in this arm, and felt like a human porcupine. And probably about the seventh day, kidney started functioning again. And I didn't go on dialysis. We were just patient. And I stayed an extra day just to humor them so that I had to prove, they took everything off of me and I had to prove I could do it on my own and I, I did. And so they let me come home. And the first thing I did was Larry got in the car and he goes, I know where we're going. He just made a U-turn and took me straight to my garden, right there at the hospital. So that's all I asked for, was just put me in a wheelchair so I can go visit my garden, but they never would. But anyway, so thanks for all your positive thoughts and prayers. I'm doing well and I only go to Dracula once in the next three weeks. Each week I go to visit Dracula to get my blood drawn. And so my next update on kidneys, which last week was two point three, so I'm really doing well. I need to get in the point five to point one or to one and they will be perfect. And so I'm heading in the right direction. So thanks to everybody. And I just wanted to update because there were a few ugly emails out there about me and I don't have a foot in the grave and I'm doing just fine. So thanks. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilors. Next slide, please, some updates real quick. First of all, if you could go back one to the first slide, there we go. If you haven't driven on Federal Boulevard by the savory, savory mushrooms water tower, it recently received a nice new coat of paint. And it was with a special paint that will withstand some of that intense UV light, which had caused it to fade out prematurely. And just want to thank, I had a resident who contacted me last fall and said, hey, have you looked at that water tower? It really needs a good coat of paint. And so took it to PRL and PRL got it taken care of. And here we are, six months later, and it's looking very, very nice. So great job there. But also, you know, as we worked through this process, learned that the city actually has a very active program to update these historic landmarks. And so down in Historic Westminster, the original town hall will be repainted here in the near future and to include the decorative lettering that's on the building. And they'll put some kind of special sealant on the, on the roof shingles to maintain the integrity of them. So that's good news for preserving that, that part of the city's history.
That'd help the raccoons not get in there.
I would imagine so, especially if it's sticky. The Lower Church Lake Barn will also receive a new coat of paint this year. We've got folks that are doing an analysis of the painting needs for the Bull's House proper, because that's a major undertaking. And then already this year, the Marion Wilkins Ward Barn received new paint and also the Semper Farmhouse and the outbuildings there received new paint. And so PRNL keeping up with that and getting after it. So thanks for all the work on that.
Oh, looks great.
Yep, next slide. Westie Nguyen, Investigator Joe Docherty. So on May twenty-ninth, this past week, he's an investigator in our PD and he was recognized at the 2024 Mothers Against Drunk Driving and CDOT Awards Banquet. And he received the award for the Drug Recognition Expert Instructor of the Year. And if you continue on in the following two bullets, he got that instructor certification in nineteen ninety-seven, taught classes throughout the US. Thousands of officers have been trained, certainly well-known, well-respected in law enforcement community for his passion for DUI enforcement. And then, you know, really the impaired driving enforcement and deterrents. It's been significant. Our roadways are safer and we're very, very proud to have him on our, on our city team and certainly within the police department. So congratulations to Investigator Docherty. Next slide. Some things to know, Special Permits and Licensees Board Meeting goes Wednesday evening this week, seven to eight thirty PM, City Council Chambers. The Summer Block Party, which was an item of discussion earlier this evening, that goes Friday from six thirty to eight thirty PM in Historic Westminster. And City Council Meeting, next one, is Monday, week from today, six thirty PM, right here in Council Chambers with the pre-meeting. Next slide. No information, only items this evening. Next slide. Next slide. And as always, want to encourage folks to reach out and contact us. Um, phone number, three oh three six five eight two thousand six is my office email. Uh, you can do that to me directly. And as always, encourage folks to, uh, follow us on, uh, Facebook. Uh, you can, uh, check us out on Instagram. Um, you can, uh, contact us on X, formerly known as Twitter, and you can ring our bell at Next Door. Uh, key in all this, we wanna be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening. Nothing?
I see no hands.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, let's get going.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, um, the long-awaited, uh, presentation and discussion of Westminster Hills, uh, of note is certainly the off-leash, uh, dog park area. That's a major, um, uh, thing for people to consider. Um, certainly been a long process from January to now. Um, what we are, uh, providing you tonight is some background, um, on the, the management plan and then really, um, four options the council had offered during a previous council meeting, um, that they would like to see some options. So we have options. And, uh, um, the way that I've kind of, uh, wrapped my arms around this is we're really talking about level of service. The question at hand before the council is what level of service does the city council want to provide in its off-leash, uh, dog, uh, dog park area? So you have one option, uh, which is four hundred and seventy acres. Uh, you know, that's a, a regional, uh, dog park, if you will, um, for the metro region. You've got something a little bit less than that, step down to two hundred acres of off-leash space, another one below that at about a hundred acres of off-leash, uh, dog space and then a quote, uh, a smaller neighborhood, uh, entity, if you will, at about thirty-three acres. But, um, I'm gonna turn it over to our Parks, Rec and Library Director, Tomasz Rera Michler. Um, he's been leading this effort. I am, uh, very pleased with the product that he's getting ready to present to you this evening. Um, and, uh, you know, he's gonna do that presentation. It's a long, uh, batch of slides. I hope, uh, you might've had an opportunity to, um, kinda peruse through those and he'll add some context to those, um, this evening. And so with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Tomasz. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilors. Um, my name is Tomasz Rera Michler and I have the honor of being the Director of Parks Recreation Libraries for the City of Westminster. I'm joined here at the table by Lance Johnson. He's our Manager of Parks, Golf and Open Space and by Joe Frealle, who is our Superintendent of Open Space. Uh, Westminster Hills Open Space is a one thousand and fifty acre preserve and it's facing challenges due to resource limitations and increased use, particularly off-leash dog walking. This report outlines various options for city council direction, aiming at a better balance between recreational opportunities with ecological sustainability. Uh, there will be plenty of time after my presentation for any questions you may have. I'll be presenting some background information with an overview of our open space program, a summary of the public engagement we've undertaken, and a description of how this open space, natural resource, and off-leash area fits into the regional context. We've developed four site options for your consideration. These options span a wide range of choices, which include little or no change from the current four hundred and seventy acre off-leash dog area, an option establishing a large two hundred acre off-leash dog area, a mid-sized option at a hundred and ten acres, and a neighborhood-sized option at thirty-three acres. This will be followed by a discussion of issues and recommendations regarding related policies, operational recommendations, and capital improvement recommendations. So Westminster boasts a long and rather distinguished history of open space preservation. In nineteen eighty-five, through a groundbreaking voter-approved sales tax initiative, Westminster became only the second city in Colorado to establish a dedicated municipal open space preservation program. This forward-thinking approach secured vital funding for the acquisition and stewardship of these critical lands. Preserved open spaces are intended to provide a multitude of environmental benefits. They act as sanctuaries for sensitive ecosystems, safeguarding them from development and enabling unimpeded wildlife movement. These areas function as vital green buffers between developed areas, fostering biodiversity and promoting a healthy ecological balance. Open spaces offer residents convenient access to a wealth of passive recreational opportunities, immersing oneself in nature through activities like hiking, bird watching, or simply enjoying scenic vistas, fostering a profound connection with the natural world. This connection contributes significantly to Westminster's high quality of life, promoting physical and mental well-being for all residents. Westminster Hills Open Space is a crown jewel in our city's open space network. But we might ask ourselves, why did Westminster Hills Open Space become a priority for preservation in the first place? There are some compelling reasons called out in the Westminster Municipal Code as criteria for the selection of open spaces for preservation. The initial motivation for securing Westminster Hills Open Space was a proactive one. We recognize the imminent threat of development with plans for a large office park in the works. By taking action, the city secured this land, beginning in nineteen eighty-eight and continuing until, uh, as recently as last year, safeguarding its natural beauty and open character for generations to come. Westminster Hills Open Space with its iconic mountain vistas is a vital part of Westminster's identity and visual character. Westminster Hills Open Space serves as a sanctuary for a diverse range of wildlife, including eight species designated by the State of Colorado as being of greatest conservation need. This includes iconic species like the bald eagle, the burrowing owl, and the northern leopard frog. By protecting Westminster Hills Open Space, we protect these vulnerable creatures and ensure a healthy ecosystem. One of the key goals of our open space program is to return and maintain these sites to their natural state. It's safe to say that all or most of the open space lands that we've purchased over the years were not in great ecological condition when acquired. This is true of Westminster Hills Open Space, which had been used as pasture for years prior to our purchase. But the reason that we've commissioned studies and hire highly qualified staff is to work toward the goal of returning these lands to their natural state. Off-leash dogs are not the sole cause of the environmental degradation of Westminster Hills Open Space, but they are a contributing factor and a significant one. In the year two thousand, City Council approved the introduction of a pilot off-leash program in a designated twenty-seven acre site situated in the northeast corner of Westminster Hills Open Space. Eight years later, in two thousand eight, off-leash access was established to encompass the entirety of Westminster Hills Open Space. The off-leash area was reduced to its current size of four hundred and seventy acres in two thousand and ten. For much of the, this time, off-leash dog walkers were mostly concentrated in about seventy acres in the area near Sims Street Parking Lot. Very significant development occurred in two thousand and seventeen with the construction of the Greenway Trail Extension. This extension was accompanied by the installation of a trailhead and a second parking lot at a hundredth near Sims. This development was followed by a surge in visitation to Westminster Hills Open Space as it became a favored destination for off-leash dog walking for the entire Denver metro region. The two thousand and fourteen Open Space Stewardship Plan identified the need for a more comprehensive management plan specifically tailored for Westminster Hills Open Space. In two thousand and twenty-three, city staff collaborated with Environmental Consultants ERO to provide an independent assessment of the existing site conditions. Recognizing the importance of sharing the findings of the ERO study and securing public input, the city initiated a series of community engagements in November of two thousand and twenty-three. To further strengthen this po- process, a community advisory team was established in March of two thousand and twenty-four. The draft Westminster Hills Open Space Final Conditions Report, prepared by Environmental Consultants ERO, was presented to the Parks Recreation Libraries Open Space Advisory Board in October of two thousand and twenty-three. Open forums were held November two thousand and twenty-three through March two thousand and twenty-four to gather public input directly from residents. ERO submitted their final report in January of two thousand and twenty-four, providing a comprehensive assessment of Westminster Hills Open Space. The Westy Dog Park Guardians Volunteer Group was established in January two thousand and twenty-four. To ensure balanced representation, the community advisory team was established comprised of residents from various stakeholder groups. Westminster Hills Open Space Community Advisory Team is a collaborative effort between the City of Westminster, Department of Parks, Recreation and Libraries, and engaged residents. They served in an advisory capacity, focusing on the community's use and enjoyment of Westminster Hills Open Space, meeting five times, including a visit on-site. This includes aspects such as size, location, rules, and amenities of the off-leash dog area. Recognizing the need for a sustainable solution, the community advisory team focused on balancing the needs of off-leash dog walkers with ecological health and responsible use. Representation on the community advisory team ensured a well-rounded perspective with members representing four primary user groups: off-leash dog park users, cyclists, neighbors, and open space environmental enthusiasts. And I would add experts. Staff recommendation have, have been carefully crafted to consider the valuable insights from the community advisory team, along with the views and needs of each primary user group. The community advisory team provided thirteen recommendations for staff analysis. These recommendations address key community concerns raised throughout the engagement process. I want to express appreciation for the time and valuable input the community advisory team provided to this collaborative process. While Westminster Hills Open Space boasts a remarkable one thousand and fifty acres, its significance extends far beyond its individual size. I want to highlight Westminster Hills Open Space role within a much larger ecological tapestry. While some may focus on Westminster Hills Open Space individual size, it's crucial to recognize its role as a critical piece within a much larger and interconnected ecosystem. Westminster Hills Open Space serves as a vital link in this thirteen thousand acre network of protected short grass prairie, offering habitat for a multitude of species and contributing to the overall hel- overall health of the Front Range ecosystem. Short Grass Prairie Ecosystems is one of the most threatened ecosystems in Colorado, if not the world. The Federal Fish and Wildlife Agency estimates that Westminster Hills Open Space is also part of a near contiguous one hundred thousand acres of preserved open spaces in the Front Range. Westminster Hills Open Space transcends its boundaries, offering regional significance for habitat preservation, scenic beauty, and public recreation. By recognizing Westminster Hills Open Space role within this larger context, we can ensure informed decision-making for its future management, ecologically benefiting not just Westminster, but the entire Front Range region. Westminster Hills Open Space Off-Leash Dog Area at four hundred and seventy acres is one of the largest in the state. Most Front Range municipalities require leash dogs on all open space trails, with designated off-leash areas being the exception. Westminster allows leash dogs on all open space trails where visitors are permitted. The two largest state park dog off-leash areas following Westminster Hills Open Space are Cherry Creek State Park Dog Off-Leash Area at a hundred and seven acres. That's, uh, the, um, dot over on the, on the left, right? On the right, sorry, number three. Um, and Chatfield State Park at sixty-nine acres. Both state park dog off-leash areas charge additional entrance fees on top of the state park entry fee, while off-leash access is otherwise prohibited within all state parks. Here in Westminster, we currently enjoy three off-leash dog parks in Westminster, including Little Dry Creek Dog Park at one point four four acres, that's number nine on the map, and Big Dry Creek Dog Park at two acres, which is number thirty-eight on the map. We have two permanent dog parks coming in the next year or so, including an eight thousand square feet at, uh, Park at Squire's Park, uh, approximately one point one eight of an acre, and the new five thousand eight hundred square feet downtown Ciner Park Dog Park to be completed by spring of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, a temporary twenty-eight thousand six hundred square foot or point six six of an acre dog park will also be constructed downtown in the coming year. As a point of comparison, all forty-eight dog parks in the Denver metro region fit easily within the four hundred and seventy acre Westminster Hills Open Space Off-Leash Dog Area. The next largest off-leash dog area after Westminster Hills is number forty-two at Cherry Creek State Park, which is a hundred and seven acres out of a four thousand acre park. It represents two percent of the park's overall area. Our entire open space system is three thousand eight hundred acres citywide. The current off-leash dog area at Westminster Hills Open Space represents twelve percent of our entire open space lands, and it represents forty-five percent of Westminster Hills Open Space. Westminster Hills Open Space has seen a substantial rise in popularity, particularly for off-leash dog walking activities. This latest growth began in two thousand and seventeen with the completion of the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail Extension and a new trailhead and parking lot installed at a hundredth Avenue and Sims Street. Further contributing to this trend were COVID-nineteen restrictions, encouraging increased outdoor recreation. Based on a full year of trail counter data, we now estimate that Westminster Hills Open Space receives a minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand annual visits. This is revised downward from an approximate one million visits in earlier estimates, which was based on a two-month sample in May and June of two thousand and twenty-three. Limited parking capacity at Westminster Hills Open Space has led to visitor overflow. This results in illegal parking on surrounding streets and within the countryside neighborhood, which causes inconvenience, frustration, and safety concerns for the residents. The significant rise in visitors has spurred the development of unauthorized, what we call, "social trails" outside of designated pathways. These trails can contribute to erosion, damage-sensitive ecosystems, and disrupt wildlife habitat. This graphic illustrates the current potential ecological impact of designated and undesignated trails and user behavior on wildlife habitat at Westminster Hills Open Space, particularly sensitive bird populations. So the green zones represent the remaining habitat areas outside of the buffer areas impacted by off-leash dogs. Once the trail system is revised and based on the option selected, we anticipate that the net wildlife zones may increase. Studies have shown that the presence of off-leash dogs can have a significant negative impact on bird populations in short grass prairies like Westminster Hills Open Space. This is concerning because many grassland bird species in this ecosystem nest on the ground, making them particularly vulnerable to disturbance. Off-leash dogs are estimated to displace birds within a two hundred and fifty-foot buffer on each side of trails, a significantly larger area compared to on-leash dogs with an impact area of approximately fifty feet on each side of the trail. Research suggests that off-leash dog presence can reduce the bird population by up to fifty percent. Bird populations serve as an indicator of the overall health of the short grass prairie ecosystem. By minimizing ecological disturbance, we can promote a healthier and more balanced environment for all wildlife species. Implementing responsible pet management practices, such as on-leash dog walking, can have significant benefits for wildlife habitat at Westminster Hills Open Space, furthering the goal- benefits for wildlife habitat at Westminster Hills Open Space, furthering the goals of our open space preservation program as designed, defined in the Westminster Municipal Code. Despite current challenges, the city acknowledges the significant opportunities Westminster Hills Open Space presents for both environmental protection and public enjoyment. Although the site has faced environmental pressures, Westminster Hills Open Space remains well-positioned for native grassland habitat restoration. This can provide valuable sanctuary for diverse wildlife species. And the unimpeded mountain views enhance the visitor experience at Westminster Hills Open Space. The site offers excellent potential for high-quality passive recreation activities catering to a wide range of user preferences. We've received valuable feedback from the community advisory team, residents with diverse interests and dog lovers who share a passion for responsible pet ownership. As we consider management options, striking a balance between environmental protection and public access is paramount. So in the upcoming slides, we'll outline various options and their potential impacts, ensuring informed decision-making for the ongoing success of Westminster Hills Open PRL's management of Westminster Hills Open Space System is guided by two key documents: Wildlife and Natural Resource Management Plan, dating to 2010. This plan provides a framework for protecting and enhancing natural environments within all of our open space properties, including Westminster Hills Open Space. And the Open Space Stewardship Plan from 2014. The Open Space Stewardship Plan recommends the necessary resources required for the effective maintenance of transitional landscapes like Westminster Hills Open Space. It also outlines a long-term goal of transitioning these areas to a self-sustaining state, which will result in lower annual management costs. The full implementation of the Open Space Stewardship Plan's recommendations for Westminster Hills Open Space and citywide open space initiatives face significant funding limitations. The 2014 Open Space Stewardship Plan recommends an annual allocation of $1,713 per acre. That adds up to roughly $805,000 solely for restoring and managing the 470-acre Westminster Hills Off-Leash, Open Space, Off-Leash Dog Area. However, the current citywide open space budget for 2024 is approximately $588 per acre, which adds up to an annual budget of $2.2 million for all citywide open space and trails restoration, management, operations, and capital improvement projects. Now, staff estimates the potential cost of full restoration at Westminster Hills Open Space could reach about $10,000 an acre. While the Open Space Stewardship Plan proposes a quicker 2.5 or 2.5-year restoration at 805,000 annually, staff recommends a more sustainable approach. Spreading restoration efforts over five years at 400,000 a year would result in a total cost of $2 million. Following restoration, maintaining a healthy ecosystem is estimated to require a dedicated annual budget of $200,000, significantly lower than initial restoration. Despite funding limitations, Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department remains committed to Westminster Hills Open Space. Here are some of the ongoing efforts by the PRL team in addition to routine maintenance. Through collaboration with volunteers, the PRL department has successfully eradicated all Class A state-listed noxious weeds at Westminster Hills Open Space. Active management of Class B and C species is ongoing. The comprehensive GIS inventory of all remaining invasive plant species at Westminster Hills Open Space has been completed. And over the past two years, the department has effectively utilized our partnership with the Mile High Youth Corps Program for invasive plant removal efforts. The department has a long history of engaging volunteers in Westminster Hills Open Space stewardship. Regular volunteer dog waste pickup events were successfully held from 1999 until 2019, with a pause due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Some of the shared considerations that cross all four options include designated the western 600 acres of Westminster Hills Open Space off-limits to dogs, both on and off-leash. All options retain the Greenway Trail, with a staff recommendation for considering realignment and option two, to enhance separation between off-leash dogs and cyclists. This realignment would utilize the newly-installed concrete trail along 100th Avenue. All four options will require a partnership with Dry Creek Valley Ditch Company to determine any access improvements or restrictions to their easement, which would be subject to negotiations with the ditch company. All four options include restructuring the trail system. Habitat impacts in the following slides are shown based on the existing trail layout, including the impact from both designated and undesignated trails. Implementing a new, well-designed trail system and restoring efforts for abandoned social trails could lead to an increase in the total remaining wildlife habitat areas. Except for option four, relocating the entire 59 spaces located at the Sim Street Parking Lot to the 100th Avenue Parking is recommended to mitigate impacts on the surrounding neighborhood and to avoid the added expense associated with implementing a neighborhood parking permitting So now we get to the heart of the presentation. This presentation explores four potential site options for off-leash dog areas at Westminster Hills Open Space. The first three options are informed by maps generated by members of the community advisory team. You can see the community advisory team's original maps in their summary report. The fourth option is aligned with recommendations from ERO, our environmental consultants. Each option will be presented with a corresponding map, including a projection of potential wildlife habitat impacts based on the off-leash area's size and leash requirements. The pink area that you see kind of zigzagging across that upper corner of, the upper right-hand corner, is the ditch, that's the Dry Creek Valley ditch there. Option one proposes no changes to the existing off-leash area size of 470 acres. Increased visitor education and enforcement efforts would be important to pursue and would require additional budget and staff. To avoid neighborhood parking impacts, the Sim Street Parking Lot would be relocated to the 100th Avenue Lot, replaced by a pedestrian-only entrance. An additional bridge crossing the ditch may be constructed if we can successfully negotiate an agreement with the ditch company. Maintaining the current off-leash area size, combined with the existing social and designated trail impacts, is estimated to leave approximately 50 acres of viable wildlife habitat out of the 470 acres off-leash dog walking area. Installation of a new, well-designed trail system could potentially increase the amount of remaining wildlife habitat. Due to the potential for significant and permanent wildlife habitat loss and the limitations of increased visitor education and enforcement alone, this option is not recommended. Option two calls for a large off-leash area with Greenway Trail realignment. The off-leash dog area would be in a designated 200-acre zone. Additionally, the Greenway Trail would be realigned to utilize the newly-installed concrete trail located along the south side of Westminster Hills Open Space. Dogs would be required to be on leash while on the Greenway Trail and while using the remaining 270 acres. This would remain the largest off-leash dog park in the region, roughly twice the size of the next largest dog park. Selecting option two prior to addressing existing social and designated trail disturbances is estimated to preserve approximately 201 acres of viable wildlife habitat. Option three proposes a mid-sized designated off-leash dog area of approximately 110 acres, located on the eastern edge of Westminster Hills Open Space. The remaining 310 acres would require dogs to be on leash. This option avoids the need for Greenway Trail realignment, reducing construction costs and potential disruptions to the site's ecology, while minimizing the potential for cyclist and off-leash dog conflicts. This also remains the largest off-leash dog park in the Denver metro area. Selecting option three for a mid-sized off-leash area prior to addressing existing social and designated trail disturbances is estimated to preserve approximately 255 acres of viable wildlife habitat. Option four, this option proposes reduction of the off-leash area to an approximately 33-acre neighborhood-sized area located in the northeast corner of Westminster Hills Open Space. This would primarily serve Westminster residents and neighborhood dog walkers, not a regional audience. However, at this size, it would remain the largest municipal dog park in Denver metro outside of the two State Parks. The next largest municipal dog park is 13 acres in size. The parking lot would be retained, but likely reduced in size somewhat. Implementing clear signage and stricter enforcement of parking regulations would help mitigate neighborhood parking concerns. Estimating off-leash dog activity on one of the, on most of the site offers the greatest potential, excuse me, eliminating off-leash dog activity on most of the site offers the greatest potential for restoring wildlife habitat, preserving and enhancing the overall ecosystem health of Westminster Hills Open Space, while still providing an off-leash dog park that is more than twice the size of the next largest municipal dog park in Denver metro. This option aligns with the original proposal to City Council for acquisition of this land and the provisions of the Westminster Municipal Code. Selecting option four, prior to addressing existing social and designated trail disturbances, is estimated to preserve approximately 300 acres of viable wildlife habitat. A few comments about policy recommendations. Tonight, we are seeking council's direction on the preferred site option for the off-leash dog area. In the next slides, we'll present the policy, operational, and capital improvement recommendations, which may be necessary depending on the site option selected. Depending on the selected options, staff will prepare a resolution for future city council action. This resolution will propose the redesignation of the selected area of Westminster Hills Open Space as parkland, bringing the selected area into alignment with the Westminster Municipal Code and allowing for off-leash dog walking. The operational recommendations and capital improvements supported by the community advisory team are noted on the slides. Adding four ranger positions will enable enhanced safety patrols, visitor education, and enforcement of park regulations seven days a week. This will contribute to a more secure environment for all park users, allow for muddy day closures, wildlife protection, and parking enforcement. We currently have seven rangers, four are dedicated to Stanley Lake, two dedicated to homelessness, and one senior ranger. I would like to thank them very much for their attendance here this evening and for their wonderful work out in our open spaces in Stanley Lake. Best Practices recommends one open space steward for every 600 acres. Right now, our three open space stewards care for 1,200 acres each. Implementing the 2014 Open Space Stewardship Plan calls for adding four open space stewards, which will allow for dedicated focus on restoration and maintenance efforts at Westminster Hills Open Space and throughout the remaining 2,800 acres of open space. These staff members will work collaboratively with volunteers to maximize the impact of these initiatives. Partnering with the community to formalize a Friends of Westminster Open Space Group will create a valuable public-private partnership for supporting open communications, ongoing maintenance, and improvements at the park. Relaunching regular volunteer cleanup and landscape restoration days will foster a sense of community ownership and contribute to a healthier environment. And in addition to educational signage, hosting onsite stewardship education pop-ups with staff and volunteers will provide educational opportunities for visitors and potential volunteers, again fostering a more engaged community. If retaining the Sim Street Parking Lot is deemed necessary, establishing a weekend parking permit zone on nearby residential blocks could be explored to manage overflow parking. This will require changes in the Westminster Municipal Code and additional resources if this option is selected. This presentation outlines several capital improvement recommendations applicable to all four management options, informed by the community advisory team. These recommendations aim to improve the environmental conditions, safety, functionality, and overall user experience at Westminster Hills Open Space. Installation of wildlife-friendly fencing will delineate the off-leash area perimeter, create buffer zones near residences, streets, and restrict access to the ditch, enhancing wildlife habitat protection, dog and user safety. Designing a new looped trail system will offer visitors a variety of trail links and experiences. And blocking and restoring social trails and abandoned designated trails will minimize environmental impact. New trails will be carefully aligned to avoid sensitive areas. Strategically placed waste containers and dog waste bag dispensers will promote cleanliness throughout the trail network. Additionally, exploring bridge replacement and potentially adding another bridge over the ditch, subject to an agreement with the ditch company, can improve circulation and accessibility. Expanding the 100th Avenue Parking Lot will compensate for the closure, if applicable, of the Sim Street Parking Lot. This expanded lot will include amenities such as signage and additional portable restrooms for visitor convenience. Implementing automatic gates with scheduled closing times and automated exiting will improve parking management and after-hours site security. Updating and standardizing signage across Westminster Hills Open Space will align with the new PRL signage master plan, which is currently under development, for better visitor communications and a cohesive user experience. Continued restoration efforts will return open space areas to their natural short grass prairie state, promoting increased biodiversity. Existing invasive plant management practices will be expanded, natural area buffer zones will be established. Designated throw-in fetch areas and a possible agility course may be explored as possibilities within the off-leash area to offer additional dog recreational opportunities if desired. Strategically placed shade structures will provide visitor comfort during hot weather. Implementing these capital improvement recommendations will create a more pollinator-friendly, sustainable, user-friendly, and aesthetically pleasing environment for all visitors to Westminster Hills Open Space. I know that's a lot. We have a large paper copy for you in a minute. This final slide of the presentation summarizes the four different management options explored for Westminster Hills Open Space Off-Leash Dog Area. Each option balances the needs of dog owners for recreation with the ecological preservation of the open space. We'll pass out this handout that details the key considerations and estimated budget for each option. These considerations include the designated off-leash area size and the associated budget implication. City's council's decision will determine the final size of the off-leash area. Option one continues to offer the largest regional dog park in the Denver area, while option four provides the largest municipal dog park, serving primarily Westminster residents at 33 acres. Regardless of the chosen option, both responsible pet ownership and a healthy Westminster Hills Open Space ecosystem are our shared goals. Moving forward, we'll focus on community partnerships and immediate improvements achievable within the current year. Long-term plans may include identification of additional funding sources, staffing, and capital projects. We thank City Council for their consideration of these options. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Counsel, is that it?
Say that again?
Excellent.
Ah, here we go. The slide on the screen shows all four options together for ease of comparison. Ah, here we go. The slide on the screen shows all four options together for ease of comparison.
Thank you for your presentation. I think it was a good summary. I have a lot of questions, so apologies to my colleagues. I'd like to start with going through a few of these slides just to set some foundation, but we'll get to the site options in a second. So if we go to the first slide, the why does Westminster preserve open space slide?
Okay. Is there a way to do this quickly?
What slide number was that?
Three.
Thank you.
So I think you gave a really good baseline on why this is so important from a quality-of-life standpoint. And this is more of a comment, but it's important for folks to know, and we've heard this from public comment for months now, that there are additional benefits to this space. The main one, in my opinion, being that physical and mental health impacts. If 24% of Westminster residents have been diagnosed with depression, and that's just of what we know. We know that's a low, it's a low number. We've heard, we've heard for months that many residents use this as their, you know, their place of peace, their place of tranquility. It helps the dogs, it helps them, it's exercise, it's recreation. It's everything that we talk about in our strategic plan as to what we want more of in the city. It's everything that we should be wanting more of in the city. So just wanted to just lay that. If you go to the next slide. The fact that this is zoned PUD, and we know we need to rezone it, so it's been used as a dog park for 22 years, correct?
In one form or another, yes, since 2000.
Are there any downsides that you see from a staff standpoint of rezoning this?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so we agree there. Next slide. The cattle that used to be on this land, so nitrogen has been brought up a bunch, right? Wasn't it due to the cattle that was there? It's no longer present, but it was before when there was a lot of cattle on there?
Very fortunate to have a subject matter specialist at the table, so I'm going to turn it over to Joe to respond to that.
So I think what you're getting at is we've indicated in various formats that the introduction of nitrogen specifically by dog waste is an issue. The difference is a native short grass prairie is evolved in the, in the company of herbivores. So cattle actually can, when utilized correctly on the property, not overpopulated, and I don't know what the cattle history was, can actually help restore the grasslands. They don't add nitrogen to the soil because they're actually taking the grass from that soil, reprocessing it back into the soil. The issue we have with dogs adding nitrogen, one, we Americans love to feed our dogs very, very well. They eat high-protein diets. Their, their waste is jack-full of nitrogen. So it is an outside source of nitrogen that is being added into the system, whereas when the cows were there, you were just part of the natural cycle of nitrogen. So no, the cattle did not raise the nitrogen levels on the soil or in the system. Dog presence has been shown to dramatically raise that.
But hasn't the dog presence not shown that? The studies haven't shown that. It's a risk of that.
No, that, we have not done soil samples to test nitrogen, but I can show you multiple studies that have shown areas that have dog use, regardless of leash or off-leash, the nitrogen levels in the soil are dramatically increased. And the reason we're concerned about that is the addition of that nitrogen, as anybody that has a nice green lawn knows, that's a fertilizer. So we are adding energy to that system that our native plants are not adapted to use. So I have two dogs. After the winter, my lawn is burned out, right? They've added a ton of nitrogen, it burns the soil out. If I don't actively do something, what comes back in that spot are invasive species. They are adapted to use that high amount of nitrogen, they're adapted to grow quickly, but they're not adapted to our conditions or to support the wildlife we have here. So that massive input of nitrogen has a significant detrimental impact on the overall health of the ecosystem.
But again, we haven't done any testing, so this is just risk assessment.
This is based on scientific studies that have studied the exact same conditions that we have here, here in the Front Range and around the world. So we know that we have an input of waste. We know we have 750,000 visitors a year, 80% or more of them are carrying dogs. Most of, every one of those dogs is urinating on our system, they're defecating in our system. Much of that defecation is not being removed, or it's being removed much, much later. All of that is an input of nitrogen. I can look at, this picture here calls it out. You're looking at what, and this is coming through an ecological eyes, I don't see anything in this immediate pathway that's native. We have invited massive amounts, you're mostly looking at cheat grass, you're looking at non-native species. That is a direct result. That's, that's what you see when you have both the physical impacts and that input.
Yeah, so not to cut you off, but to complete this point though, but again, that's still risk assessment. You haven't done a study, you haven't tested this park.
That's correct.
So that's, that's one of the yeses knowing that. I get what you're saying, it's still risk assessment, you haven't done any testing. And my point is, I hear you, but I, I believe that, and this is my personal opinion, of course, that a lot of this is due to lack of maintenance from our side. If we have a lot of poop in there, we should have had more staff over all these years to actually maintain this so that it hasn't got into the levels that it's at now. But moving on, but this slide also doesn't include the three surveys that we've heard for months now from the residents that 80% of the respondents wanted to keep this off-leash. Why is that not included in here, in the history?
Well, for me, it was not a statistically valid survey. And so while we got plenty of feedback from the folks that answered those polls, and we know exactly what the people who answered those polls felt, it didn't seem to be germane insofar as that it was not statistically valid.
That was staff that conducted it, right?
That is correct.
So why, why did we conduct non-statistically valid surveys and then, so that's a waste of taxpayer dollars, first of all? And more importantly, if we're going to do it and use staff hours and all that stuff and then not use the results, to me, that's, why do we even do, why do we do three of them? One of them is enough to be like, well, why do we do that? But we did it three times, and then you're saying now it's not valid, so we're not going to use it. Is it not valid because we didn't like the results, or is it not valid because it's statistically? So do you see where I'm getting at? Why did we do three of them?
I think that we were just really interested in getting as much feedback as we could. What we didn't realize is that we could not, there was no way to know who was a resident, who was a non-resident. And we're really interested in finding out what our residents thought about this. That's why the community advisory team was so important to this process, and that's why I focused mostly on what we learned from them.
So speaking of the CAT team, I think we can agree maybe that it wasn't a great process. It, it didn't work. We hoped it would have worked, right? The, what we heard throughout the process, those five meetings, wasn't great. And then it ended up, there was no consensus, there was no votes taken on the 13. I think only two things were talked about out of 13 things. All the things we've been hearing is not, it's not the ideal. My question is more, it's not, it's not trying to hearken that, it's more so, where did we go wrong with CAT? If you don't agree that, so if you think it was great, how was CAT great? Because the outcomes were not. If you agree that it wasn't great, what can we do better next time if we ever have another CAT for one of these things? But I think a lot of us here feel it was not a great setup.
Yeah, that's a really good observation. I think that there's a couple of things that come to mind. One is that by definition, we populated it with people with very different priorities, by definition. So coming to consensus with people coming from such very different places was probably not in the cards. And so that leads me to, on the one part, we got a lot of feedback, a lot of very valid feedback from these different points of view. Absolutely. The process was not pretty, for sure, but everybody got a chance to express what they thought about the situation very, very much. So I think that in the future, when it's a situation that is this conflictive, a community advisory team may not be the best solution. And especially not one where we have any expectation of consensus. I mean, they, by putting together a team of people who are so, coming from so different directions, consensus was really never on the table. But boy, did we get really good thoughtful input from these different perspectives. So on that, from that perspective, I think it was very helpful.
See, now the, the one thing that's really positive that I've heard about the CAT group setup, the process that came out of it, was the one thing that everyone agreed upon, right? And I want to preface this with saying that I, I hear a lot from many folks that, mainly staff, that the CAT group, that the Guardians don't, don't want to give up anything, right? They, they want it all, they don't want to negotiate. In reality, though, weren't they the ones who agreed to give up the 600 acres of on-leash? I think everyone in the CAT said, yeah, let's give that up. They all agreed, is that true? That no more on-leash 600 acres, that was agreed upon by everyone in CAT?
Yeah, I think.
And it was the Guardians that gave it up because they wanted to protect the owl.
There was a lot of consensus around that point.
And that was mainly about the owl, correct?
I think there was other factors as well.
So why, why do I hear this narrative of not everyone was trying to give, you know? That seemed like a significant negotiation.
So the, the current 600 acres that we're referring to is a leash on, is required to be on leash. That's the current, that is the current regulation there. So, and in the, the original staff proposal that we were, we were running in our presentations in November, did call for that 600. So that we, we had put that on the table, not just for the owls, but for the broader ecological protection, with the owl being a big concern. So I think that the consent, the consolation of giving back, will not allow dogs to go here. Yes, I will, I appreciate greatly that being on the table and receiving consensus. But the idea that it was a, a give from that community doesn't resonate well with me. One, the volume of use out there is very, very low already. It is not an off-leash issue that we're dealing with out there. So they gave up that small piece, but had no, there was no inter-aging or even acceptance of the dogs off-leash in this area are having an issue, and that that was what we, what we set up the CAT for was specifically to talk about the dog off-leash area and that 470 acres. I appreciate that give, I do very much. I think it's valuable, but I wouldn't overstate the value of it in the greater context.
I would overstate it. I think it was significant. 600 acres, to my, from my understanding, that was part of their whole recommendation, was keeping that. They wanted to keep that, they do use that, the on-leash west side 600 acres. And when they heard from you guys, from staff, they heard from you that the owls was a big deal, that that would, they immediately gave it up. So I think it's significant. But my question related to the owl, if, if the whole west side, so that on-leash area, if the reason for giving that up that everyone in CAT agreed upon was to protect the owl habitat, then how can we then justify running the Greenway Trail right through there? Still, we know bikes, bikers, by the way, I'm a biker, I love bikes, but this seems very, I'm trying to use kind words. It, it doesn't seem very fair to make an excuse to do one thing, and then everyone agrees with it. But then we know that bikes and that trail has a significant impact on the owl habitat, and we don't care at all. There's, there's been no recommendation on rerouting and changing it up for the habitat. It's only when it came with the dogs, everyone agreed on that, and then that's, so can you explain why the?
I can, I can. First, the, the trail exists. It is there on the ground. It will be improved, it has, but there is use on this trail now. It's an important factor. The burrowing owl and the dot that you see on the map there that was in the ERA is actually the 2022 nesting location. The entirety of the burrowing owl habitat is anywhere there is a prairie dog colony. So currently, the Greenway Trail, it exists on the ground there, goes through the northernmost section of that prairie dog colony. As I said, there's use on that trail already. The burrowing owls have chosen to use that broader site, and they have been where they are in 2022, all the way down to this more southern boundary near our office spaces over the last decade. So they've chosen to use that with the trail in place, which means that that level of disturbance, that trail use, is not an impact. I'll also point out that our partner on this trail is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They are the regulatory body for the protection of this bird. They're very aware of the existence of the bird there and the trails. The difference between dogs and bikes, you saw the buffers that were used in the presentation here. An on-leash dog, and that's the condition at that site today, would displace birds 50 feet, 50 feet off either side of that trail. Humans without a dog, that disturbance is about 10 feet. A bike is actually shown to show less disturbance largely because they move through the area at a higher speed. Their overall disturbance of bikes is equal to a pedestrian because they cover more distance. So the biggest impact to things off the trail are dogs, whether or not they're on leash. By putting dogs on leash, we reduce that impact a great deal, down to 50 feet from 250. By taking them out of the equation completely and just leaving it to pedestrian and bike traffic, we reduce that all the way down to 10 feet. So it has a huge impact to do that. So the relocation of the, the Greenways Trail as proposed by the Westy Guardians would actually traverse through that exact same prairie dog colony just on the opposite end. So we have just as much opportunity for the burrowing owls to be down the other end. And in fact, they were, prior to my time here, but they were nesting down closer to what is the sister's property in the past. That's part of their habitat. That, that trail reconstruction, we have built this trail, this is a built investment that's already there. One mile of Crusher Fine Trail, which that is, is between $600,000 and $800,000 a mile. That's based on the 2019 State Trails Plan estimates. So given our current date, we're probably on the higher end of that. It's two point, I'm sorry, 1.8 to 2 miles of new trail that's being proposed to be constructed through the prairie dog colony. So we would be moving it from disturbing the north end to disturbing the south end. In addition, the alignment that is shown there moves right through what would be Prepple's Jumping Mouse habitat, which would require us to do a different level of federal, that's a federally endangered species. We would have to do a clearance for, for Prepple's Jumping Mouse on that end.
You know, one of the complaints I hear is that we have had these goalposts of protection, right? Whether it's owls or, you know, now we're hearing about the mouse, we're hearing about the ferrets, we're hearing about lots of things. What's that?
They're vacuuming.
The transparency, so going back to the process again, it's been seven, eight months now of this, and the engagement process, would you agree the engagement process has been subpar?
I would not agree to that at all.
The outcomes, not your intent.
Not even the outcomes.
So you think people are happy with what, with how things? So you think people are happy with how things have been going?
Absolutely not. Not.
So it's not the only outcome that matters?
So some people are not happy because they haven't gotten what they want yet.
I'm just talking about process.
I think that the process has allowed all the parties to speak from their perspective and give input to the city on what their preferences and their priorities are.
Again, that's your intent. That was the intent of it. My question is, do you think the outcomes of what actually happened with the process, not the content of the outcomes of what the communication, the engagement, the timing? We have a member that was on the CAT. The mayor was on the CAT. She gave us her reports. It wasn't great. So we can't say things were great if they weren't. The minimum we can do is say, "We wanted this to be X. It was Y, and we're sorry." Or the last thing we can do, or the last thing we should do is say, "We wanted it to be X. It was Y, and it was your fault because you didn't get what you want." Or "It was your fault because..." No, I think we messed up. That's my opinion. I'm asking your opinion, and it sounds like you're saying it was great.
I'm not saying it was great. It was difficult, for sure. Did we get a lot of really good, solid input from many different perspectives on this issue? Absolutely. Was it easy getting there? Absolutely not.
Okay, so moving on to the site options. Before I get there, the operational recommendations I actually think are excellent. And like I said earlier, I think the lack of our actual maintenance, it's our fault as to why things have degraded so poorly there. It's not the dogs. It's not the people. It's all the things that we're actually recommending to do is what we should have been doing this whole time. That's why we're here. And then we survey the people and we say, "Do you want us to change things?" And they say, "No, we don't," and we still want to change it. Even though those recommendations, I think, were excellent, and that's exactly what the gap was, and we could have solved this months ago. We asked to see the Guardians' proposal. It was in our packet, but it's not really... It wasn't in the deck. It wasn't reflected well on the deck because option one is not their proposal. Option one has a change to the Sims parking lot, which they're not proposing, has losing access to the ditch, which they're not proposing, has a lot of things that actually is not the recommendation. We know the recommendation is like a couple hundred pages long or something, right? What work, what effort was put in? And not just the Guardians. I think there are several other groups that we're not seeing reflected there as well. But again, because the CAT was not great, the process, we didn't really get to the intent. The intent of the CAT was everything that you're saying. So my question is, with the options that we're seeing here, doesn't seem to be reflective of what the CAT makeup is. Why is that? Who came up with this stuff?
I think if you look at the actual maps that were drawn by members of the CAT, which are in your package, you'll see that they're reflected in the options that are up there. We have adjusted based on information that we have. We also... I think the Guardians have done a very fine job of representing their wishes out there. And we do not... Our staff does not recommend option one. We don't. And so we're putting it out there. We put it in as one of the options. Keep it all. We do think that the issue of parking around the Sims street lot has to be dealt with one way or another. One way that we thought would be effective is to remove that parking, put it down at the 100th Avenue spot, and then we would not have to do that overlay parking permit business and have people out there on the weekends ticketing people and ruining their days.
But it's a perfectly good parking lot, right?
Yes, it is.
It just doesn't make logical sense to me as why we want to just get rid of it to avoid a future, a different risk. But related to parking, what... How many valid parking complaints have you received in the last 12 months, last three months? We say there's a lot of parking issues. I assume there's complaints that come into you guys.
Yeah, I don't have a number, but I'm sure we could get one for you, Counselor, but the... I guess it was, what, a year and a half, two years ago, what started this whole conversation? And I believe, Counselor Demat, you were there at the meeting that was held with the neighborhood around the issue of parking problems on Sims. It was a very well-attended, very boisterous meeting. So it's not an issue that we're making up. We're responding to what we've heard.
And just to be clear, I agree and I believe that there is parking issues, right?
Can I respond? I'm sorry to interrupt Counselor Zadi, but I just want to make sure the record's clear because there was that meeting. I believe the mayor was actually also at that meeting. Were you at that meeting? I know at least there were other council members there. And that was part of the parking thing. And I have other comments, so I don't want to stop, but I just want to make sure that this is clear. That was an issue. That's part of the reason we, as a city, put extra resources behind parking because that's where a lot of that started out. Because when I spoke to, and at the time, I believe Deputy City Manager Andrews was in charge because this was before Manager Freitag was with us, we said, "We need to enforce the law." I mean, that was something that I specifically said, and I think that staff did respond to that, and that has carried out through now. How it would be interesting to hear what the results of that are. But obviously, parking, that's not the only place we have parking issues. So it was looked at as a more holistic, how can we help the whole city? But a lot of that came out of the fact that when that was brought up, I agreed, and I specifically asked, "We need to address that issue" because it is dangerous when people park off a SIM. So just want to make sure that that's part of that.
Yeah, and to my understanding, we have been enforcing a lot. I know several members, community members, who called me and said, "Hey, I got a ticket just for parking in front of my house," you know? Because we're doing a lot of enforcement. So I'm shocked that we don't know that number if that's been one of the biggest pieces of this, is the parking problems. How have we not done this analysis to know complaints, to know trending? Is it getting better? Is it getting worse? We are making recommendations to move a whole parking lot without knowing if it's a, like, a quantitative... Does that make any sense, right?
Absolutely.
Is it that we don't know, or is it that you just don't have it?
I don't have it right now.
So we do have that number?
Yes.
We have the number of citations that were issued for parking violations. There's 443 in the period between May 23 to May 24 that were issued. Of those, looks like 29 citations were Westminster Addresses.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that they have not been out there every single weekend, every day, doing the work. This is, as they've been able to do the enforcement.
And we don't know what that number means in terms of if it's really bad or, like, really, really bad? So trending or, like, four... There's no baseline?
Not my month. No, I didn't have a break in my month.
I'd be curious to see if that has gone down with the increased enforcement the last several months. I'm just curious. And related to the options. So option one, the no change is not really no change because, again, you're proposing to move Sims parking lot and not keep the access to the ditch. Personally, I would like to... My personal opinion is to have option one with amendments, where it's, you keep Sims, you keep the access to the ditch, and we actually implement the 2014 stewardship plan, which will include signage, trail maps, trash, and poop bags. Because again, we... There is very little maintenance, not very little. There isn't enough maintenance happening, in my opinion, the last several years. And one of it is the availability of things like trash cans and poop bags and things that we can help the people. We know that lots of people want to actually be volunteers. So I'm also curious why the volunteer program... I know it was paused for COVID, you said. Is it not back on?
It is.
It's back on?
It is.
We had stock turnover as well during that time period.
Okay. I think we have a whole opportunity... Yeah, because now we have a volunteer coordinator, right?
Right.
So now we have this opportunity, especially with a really active community group who wants to help, to do a lot of maintenance. I mean, yes, we need the staff recommendations. We need all of that. I think we need a lot more staff, a lot more of the capital improvements. But there's a whole volunteer opportunity that we can be tapping into. So my recommendation would be, option one, keep Sims, keep the ditch, do the signage. We need signage. There's no signage out there. Implement the stewardship plan with the volunteer program. Have the trash and food bags, and give up the 600. Has everyone agreed on that, right? Turn the on-leash park into something else, so you give that up, and have more parking enforcement. I think continue the parking enforcement. That takes care of the parking. Turn it up if you need to, right? Over time, people will not want a ticket, and then you won't need to... Then you wouldn't need to do a whole revenue, you know, ticketing system of... So we can keep it simple, and my only comment here to finish this off is we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We don't have to get rid of one thing to do another. I think we can keep what the people want, 80% or more of them, and make sure we maintain it by increasing staff, right? Increasing the maintenance and enforcing the parking to take care of the other parking issues. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute break?
You're not done, right?
I'm done.
Oh, you are?
Um, councillor Duff?
Whenever.
I just don't know when his phone call is going to come, so we need to let him go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that. So, we back on?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm gonna have to excuse myself for a work call here at some point, so I appreciate that my colleagues letting me take my turn. I don't have a ton of questions, you answered a lot of them. So I'll jump straight into what I think. And so you've kind of alluded to that I've been following this issue for some time, set with staff multiple times. And I've heard a lot of these different things, I guess. Just one disappointment would be that some of these options were things we've talked about. So I would, I would have hoped they would have been part of the initial go at this. One of the things that I remember asking about two years ago, and it's in the right, as an option now, was the parking. Because I know that's probably one of the biggest things. Aside from on Sims, the other big thing that people complained to me about in my tenure on council is the parking in the neighborhood. I live in the Stanley Lake High School neighborhood. I went to Stanley Lake High School and I know that they accommodated that through parking permits. And I know when we talked about this two years ago and I asked, is that something that we could look at? I was told we would have to change our code because it's the way it's specifically written. Which to me, that's within our control. And so those are the kind of options that I like to hear because council can adjust those, much like the zoning. So my preference is some variation of option one. I think that you can come up with some accommodations. We can try to address the issues and see how it goes. It doesn't mean that that necessarily is forever. But we haven't even tried some of these options that potentially are gonna kind of help meet everybody in the middle. And I think that one of the most frustrating things as a resident, if I take my councillor hat off, is when the city changes things that we like because we have problems. But it's an amenity that we've enjoyed. Boting is the other one that I still quite frankly hear about pretty frequently. That's a harder nut to crack because we're in an IGA with our neighbors and I'm not really sure the way out of that, barring waiting another eight years for us to have that conversation again. And then, you know, likely none of us will be here. So, point being is, let's try some of these options. I think that you're not wrong on the Sims parking as far as it being an issue. But I'm looking at this and if we have room to add more parking up, up nor, or on the south end, why not add more parking and maybe make some limitations? I mean, get creative, can we make that a resident-only parking down there? Because I think one of the other things that I'm not seeing in here that I think that we should evaluate, and I've heard other parks do it, or maybe it is in there and I, and I missed it. But, you know, this is residence property bought with residence tax dollars. So I'd have a hard time wanting to have some sort of fee for them. But the folks that want to come and enjoy this great amenity from outside, they should have to pay their, their share of it. So maybe if we had some sort of, you know, summer pass or month pass or however we might look at it, or a parking fee for people who aren't residents, that might be a way that you can raise some of these funds in order to obviously accommodate it. Because, you know, I was here through the, you know, and I can go back through emails and actually some of the residents did remind me of some of the text messages and emails I had with them asking why we removed some of the poop stations. You know, you guys gave me answers and I, you know, responded. I think that that had a negative impact that's compounded some of this. And I think it, it fuels some of the frustration from the residents end. It may have been with all good intention and I always assumed it didn't. That's why I should, you know, when I asked, I shared, here's what staff says, this is what they're trying to accomplish. You know, so I just say that because I think they're learning moments that we can do better as a city as we move forward and we navigate through these issues. But, you know, I think that my preference is definitely option one. But let's still figure out how these different components can address that. And I think you have some good opportunities and options inside there that you can do that. Obviously, it's gonna cost money, but there's some ways that you can raise some of that money that we're not doing today, I think. And then I, I would, I am very much interested as, as a takeaway, I would like to hear, not just where we're at in parking now, but I'd like to look at, since we put some of that stuff in, in play, like how has that went, have the trends went a certain way, is it working, do we need to add more? Let's look at some of that data and try to figure out, are there still gaps in what we're doing that can be accommodated? Because I think too, and correct me if I'm wrong, living over there, I drive up and down that street quite a bit. You could have tried over the years to like put barriers and things like that to keep people from violating. And, and I appreciate that specifically in the areas where I think it's most dangerous, where it curves around Sims. So if there's more of that that we need to do, if we need to bring, you know, barriers to the edge or whatever it is, let's, you know, not leave that off the table either, so. But I appreciate the, both the participation from the public on all sides of the issue. We certainly, this is the most emails I've gotten on the issue since probably water rates. So it's obviously important to the residents on a variety of different avenues. But I, I think that we can try to accommodate everybody with some of these options, so.
Councillor Ireland?
So just so my colleagues know, one, two, and four is supposed to cost us 3.2 million. Option two, I mean, three is supposed to be 2.6 million. We have all these people that have volunteered and volunteered and say they're gonna volunteer. I would like just to go a year using volunteers and see what it costs us really. If it's cleaned up and if it looks better, I would like a year trial of volunteers. Instead of thinking we should spend all this money and change, make all these changes. I do agree with his parking pass thing. But I would like to know how many complaints we've had since we started policing Sims. So I would just like to see how the park looks after a year of letting the volunteers volunteer. We have, you told us we have to have, what is it? We have six, um, what is it? Park rangers, four for Stanley Lake, two for homelessness. So there's a one for?
He's the manager overseas of everything. Senior ranger, yeah.
So if we, if we say the 600 acres isn't, not for dogs at all, and we still have the 407 acres, it seems like we could get one person to staff that and the rest of it shouldn't be a big deal, since it's just no dogs at all.
I'll let Mr. Johnson address that in a second.
And how much are we spending right now per year to manage that area?
Well, then I'll let you.
Specifically Westminster Hills? Joe, do you have a specific cost? I don't have one off the top of my head.
No, I can tell you project costs, project investments, I can't give you the total cost. Part of it is, we have three open space stewards responsible for all of the system. So what portion, I, I can't calculate what time they're spending at Westminster Hills versus the totality. It is by far the largest piece of land, we put most of our time and energy there. I can tell you we have $30,000 spray contract for each hill. I can tell you we've spent about double that in individual seeding costs. But to give you the total investment per year, it's very, very difficult to pull that out of the total budget.
But it's not near 3.2 million?
I, I'm not sure what number you're, the.
3.2 million to implement one, two, or four.
That would be, that's a restoration cost. So what we're talking about, regardless, our open space mission tells us we're supposed to be restoring that. That's the cost to restore native grassland over a period of five years.
Well, I would like to change to recreation, that's what I want to see. Not open space, we have to make the native grass come back. Because I've already told you, it does not hardly exist in Colorado.
So I.
So it's not gonna be native Colorado grass, I'm telling you that right now.
I, I'm.
So I don't know what you're gonna plant there, but it's not native Colorado.
I'm not sure where that, that information came from, but we do have native grasses available. We use native grass seeds. I think what you're referencing is ancestral gene pools, it's a different concept. We restore using native grass seeds, that's the same across this league. We use blue grama, we use western wheatgrass, we use those things that belong there. So we do have that and we do have the ability to restore this, these lands if the disturbance is lifted. In the face of this disturbance, restoration is not possible.
Well, all I know is people are just as important as the ecology. If we have 600 acres, it's gonna be for ecology. We should have 400 some for, for people to use and their dogs. Because there's gotta be a balance in this world. And we have high income, I mean, high density housing we're building, people need a place to go.
I agree with you 100%.
So that's where I stand. So I'm for number one with letting volunteers run it for a year.
If I could address that point. Councillor, I, I've spent actually almost my entire career running public-private park partnerships. So I'm a big believer in the role of volunteers in making a difference.
But they want to and we haven't let them.
Well, I think that there's a real opportunity here, not just with Westminster Hills, but throughout the entire system to partner with the community to, to bring, invite volunteers in to help us do a great job taking care of our open spaces and parks. Absolutely. There's no question that that's something. I do know that it doesn't happen by magic. It does require significant coordination and, and my former COO used to say that free is expensive. So there is a cost associated with effective volunteer coordination. We're really blessed with a tremendous volunteer coordinator for open spaces. He's just starting to get his, his sea legs, you might say. But I do think you're gonna see some really great opportunities for partnership. Especially with Leave No Trace coming to town and, and working with us in the coming few months. I think you're gonna see a lot of opportunities emerging for real effective partnership with volunteers.
Well, I know that I've talked to a lot of volunteers that are smart and ready to work.
Yeah, there's no question about that.
I don't know who's leading them, but there's plenty of leaders in that group that can get the job done. That's all I would say.
Councillor Chameleon?
Sure. Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I think that it's really clear that this is a work of passion and I want that to be recognized. You have to be very passionate about this to provide as much information as you have and the time and commitment that this whole study has taken. I also think that the 383 pages in our packet prove that there's that passion there. So thank you for that commitment to providing us as much information as possible. I also want to say that it's clear that you're committed to protecting the land for the intrinsic value of the land. And I think that that can be misunderstood, and so I hope that I can speak a little bit to that. And I also think that we, as stewards of the land, must do a better job of connecting with the residents as to the importance of the land itself, which is a conversation we actually just had with Mr. Lucas of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife on Friday. So I hope we can work on that going forward. I just want to begin with where we started. I've heard a lot of why now, where did this come from? And although you went through it, I just want to highlight that this came from our 2014 Open Stewardship Plan and putting that plan into action, right? And that plan was to protect our open spaces. And what came out of that plan was last year's ERO. And it was when we got the results of that ERO that we had some findings that said, oh, hello, we're not doing, we're not protecting the land as we should, what do we do now about that? So I say that on the record just to recognize where this came from and why we're here. Because for many folks, I hear, well, we've had this for 20 years. We have. And this is just a piece of our commitment, the city's commitment, that we've made to protect our land. And so that's why we're here. I also want to say, and I think that many folks read the ERO, but I'll quote this, "As per the ERO, the Westminster Municipal Code states, 'Dogs may be allowed off-leash if it does not impact the open space purposes for which the land was acquired. Current off-leash activity and volume do not meet this standard and should be addressed by the recommendations provided in the Visitor and Recreation Use Management section." And so, again, I just want to say, you do, you're doing your job and thank you. I also want to, from my point of view, explain the importance for those who may not have the connection to the land, that those with a background might better understood. It might come a second nature to some of us here to say, well, obviously this needs to be protected because there's species there and we know how delicate the flora is. But I just want to say, short grass prairies are, and, Joe, I think this came from you and I love this quote, "Short grass prairies are the equivalent of an old-growth forest on Front Range plains." I wish that through this process, and I mentioned this a little earlier, that we would have offered a tour for our residents as part of this cap process through the lands, similar to a tour that I got, that really explained the species that are out there. And I mean, just the little itty-bitty cactus, right? You know? And the paintbrush flowers, all of it, right? I wish we would have that tour to get a better feeling and idea of what's out there. I think that without that understanding, we lack a little bit of foresight on how to protect our land when we don't understand what's out there. And I want to say that you went through a lot today, we talked about a lot, but we did not talk about carbon sequestration. And I just wanted to be clear that the same land that we are walking across and trampling on is the land primarily responsible for reducing our climate impact. And so we're here, we're upset and worried about forest fire, about wildlife fires, right? And this is the land that we're trying to protect that's responsible for reducing that. I'll also say, and this is in that report, but not everyone probably got through all 383 pages, is that to allow off-leash dogs on this open space area means that we are comfortable reducing our birds, many of them that only exist on short grass prairies, which are, as you mentioned, an extremely endangered habitat by over 50%. And it decreases our probability of ever being able to introduce blackfoot ferrets, which were mentioned. You know, that's a hope, right? I know that we have these items that folks have said, well, that's not there right now. That's not the point. The point is what can we have and what can we create and how can we be better stewards? And I'll quote Edward Abbey here, my personal hero. "To all accusations of excessive development, the administrators can reply, as if, as they will if they're pressed hard enough, that they are giving the public what it wants, that their primary duty is to serve the public, not preserve the wilds. Parks are for people, is the public relations slogan. Is this assumption correct? Perhaps. Does that justify the continued and increasing erosion of the parks? It does not." And I want to just put some emphasis that the value in the land is the network, you know, of the short grass prairie. It has value in and of itself, whether it can stand on its own as a full ecosystem or not. It is right across the street from, I think it was 40,000 acres that you said is U.S. Fish and Wildlife land, how?
Forty thousand includes the greater area.
The whole area, right. So, and that's right across the street because we put a road through it, right? We disrupted that land or else it would be part of one entire, we happen to put now Indiana through that. To that, I'll say organizations that have reached out have included the Butterfly Pavilion, PSR, the director of, the former director of community development for the city of Westminster, Prairie Protection of Colorado, another individual, board treasurer of Prairie Protection. And of course, we have the expertise of our environmentalists on staff. And dozens of emails have asked to move the dog park entirely to a different location to preserve the prairie corridor to Canada, which we're not even considering this evening. So I just want to say that, to put that out there, that we are not even considering what environmental organizations are asking us to do. So I just want residents to be aware of that. We, we are already, you know, compromising here by not considering that. I also want to say, sometimes a space takes on a life of its own. This issue, I think unbeknownst to all of us, council and residents, has united the community in a way that little else in Westminster has before. I do want to congratulate the residents on what a force they are and what a movement they've created. I think it's clear that this issue and space has become, it's taken on a life and it's become something larger than what itself originally was. And I think we have a duty to represent our citizens and to respond to that. So I just want to say the stories that we've heard over the last six months have impressed upon me the importance of the location and realizing that this is part of the heart and pulse of Westminster. and realizing that this is part of the heart and pulse of Westminster. And I wanna say that there's so much in the stories I heard than I was aware of. There's a lot more going on there, such as accessibility for folks in wheelchairs and that it's one of the only places that people can um run freely with their dogs and their dogs can run freely. The effect that the space has on mental health and the emotional and social value our neighbors have on this space, I just wanna say it's something um that a proper value cannot be placed on, and it is priceless. So um I started this by thanking the staff for their passion around this issue, and I also want to say now that I wanna thank the guardians and all the residents who contributed the massive amount of information we have around the park uh and around its importance to the community. You have inspired me, and I think that we have a responsibility as a steward of the land, and we also have a responsibility to you. Therefore, you have persuaded me um to vote ultimately for a larger off-leash area than I think I would normally recommend. And I know that I'm in the minority here by not recommending for the entirety of it. I just hope that I can persuade my councillors as to the importance of this uh land, that I vote for the two hundred acres to protect. And that was my original lean when I first heard this issue. Why can't we cut it in half, you know? Why are we proposing such a small area? I think that's upsetting to residents. Why can't we protect at least half? And I know I'll be in the minority, so I'm hoping that maybe if we compromised even further and just ceded another hundred acres to the open space so that we're not giving up all four hundred acres of our open space right now, that we, that is a major loss for our city. We're saying, we're giving up four hundred acres that will no longer be in our custody, and that is technically our responsibility to protect that land. And I ran an entire campaign saying that I would protect that land. So for all of those out there, I hope you still believe in me when I say I'm trying to find a way to balance those issues. So I hope that we can come to some sort of compromise and protect just some of this to create a better buffer uh for the rest of the open space we have out there. As far as the details of the park, I hope we can go into some of the ad hoc items um from what the city and the guardians recommend. I do recommend, I think as others have said, signage, double gates to protect dogs coming in and out, compostable doggy bag dispensers, um hopefully permits for those who live in the neighborhoods. I think that's a good idea. I agree with councillor DeMott on the annual passes from folks coming in from Longmont, Boulder, et cetera. I think that's a good idea. And I think we can do that in such a way that is attainable and affordable. I think just twenty-five, thirty dollars for an annual pass is not out of reach for most residents. And I think it will help um our city just a little bit with revenue. And I would like to talk about the fencing in there. I think that the recommendation was high-tension wire. I heard some stories that I'm not sure are true, but is there barbed wire in there now?
If there is, it's on a removal list. That is one of the things that
It's on a removal list. Okay.
Barbed wire in the open space system is scheduled to remove. I am not one hundred percent where we are in Westminster Hills. I would have thought it's all gone from there.
Yeah, it's still there.
Where?
I don't know where, but I know it's
So we do, we are replacing out all all our fencing has been a question. The high tensile fence is our standard. So internal fences, we use a three-strand high tension, high tensile wire fence. It's a wildlife-friendly fence, I believe. The guardians included the reference to the Colorado State uh fencing for wildlife. Our specifications actually come from page nine in that document. That is what we use.
That's good to hear. Thank you. And I've heard, I've just heard complaints about the barbed. Well, I, it sounds like we're working on getting that out. Do we have an ETA on when that'll be complete?
I I I'll go out on a limb and make a promise. I'll get it out within the month.
The month. That's amazing.
On the system.
Okay, so at least
Find where it is there.
Yeah, if anyone knows where it is, we'd appreciate a tip.
Okay, well.
Get the drones out.
Yeah. There we go.
Yeah. Okay, and then I think that we should also uh talk about the trail, the Greenway Trail, and where that's going through. I know that that's been a concern for both residents and myself. Um I'd like to take a look at where we're planning to reroute the trail. Because if we can reduce the impact of, you know, removing a whole trail and creating more construction, um but I've heard that it's going close to the burrowing owls, and I I'm sure that you would have tried to avoid that, but then I uh heard that when we proposed the guardian suggestion, it might go close to a jumping mouse area or whatnot. So I don't know. I'd like you to expand on that.
Sure. Th- so the existing Greenway Trail, as it is, that's actually not on the total map here. Uh it hugs basically the northern boundary of our property when it gets into the western half, so it's along the border with the the Broomfield property. The burrowing owl in twenty twenty-two, as noted in that um ERO report, was within the eight, one-eighth mile recommended buffer. And I I wanna make sure we're clear on that. That's a recommendation from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And that recommendation, there's an, there's an identical recommendation about bald eagle buffers. So the bald eagle buffer is a half mile. Well, India, uh not sorry, Alchire, Hundredth Street, um and a portion of the existing Westminster Hills open space are all within that half-mile buffer. So the recommendations based on the, there's some reality checks with that, right? So if the species, if that particular pair demonstrates tolerance for that area, they've chosen that area even though that disturbance already exists, then the buffer can be modified appropriately. That's what's the condition that we're talking about with the existing Greenway Trail and the burrowing owl as it was in twenty twenty-two. I won't tell you exactly where it is, but this year's burrowing owl is not in that same site. It has moved further south. So it does move year to year. So when we talk about burrowing owl habitat, the entirety of that colony, that prairie dog colony out there, is burrowing owl habitat. And on any given year, it could be anywhere within that very large colony. The existing trail alignment, as I said, has been approved. We're working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They are our partners on this. In fact, when we do the final improvement, so there's an, there's still some work that needs to be done to upgrade the last segment. It's about a quarter mile that still hasn't been upgraded. U.S. Fish and Wildlife is actually gonna do that work for us. There is no world in which U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would go in there and disturb a burrowing owl or violate their own policies. I apologize. I have some throat issues. The reroute that has been proposed would pull it down onto the Hundredth Trail. So that's a stretch that's already built. There's no uh associated cost with that. But then it goes on to the access to our brow property and our our secure facilities, which is actually not part of the open space. If you look at any of the maps, you'll see that that's crossed out. That's actually not part of open space. It's held in a different land format. So we would need to route it. That prairie dog colony that I just mentioned is on both sides of that access road. So there is no routing of the Greenway Trail that avoids the prairie dog colony. When it gets to the opposite side of the brow property, the the map as shown in in the guardians drawing, it goes down on to the the dam and the the um Mauer Reservoir. That area is identified as Prebble's Jumping Mouse habitat. Whether or not Prebble's jumping mice are actually there is not known. In order to know that, you have to do sampling. But because it's Prebble's jumping mouse habitat, we would have to do a federal clearance to do any construction there. All all told, taking away this the stretch that's already built as a hundred, we're looking at a based on my best estimate of what what the guardians have put down, about one point eight to two miles of trail, depending exactly how and how you align it. So we would be taking away, first of all, withdrawing that tra- removing that trail, there's a significant expense in taking that out. You have to haul that material out. That material's not reusable for the trail. But we would then be building a new trail at six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars per mile. So roughly a one point eight million dollar project to build that trail. And I'm I'm out on a limb, but I I'm thinking my hauling costs alone from removing the section of Greenway Trails that we're talking about would be in the two hundred thousand dollar range.
Okay. I think we have further discussions on on monetary costs here to more to come.
Yeah.
Okay, and I know that you, I trust you to know what's best, especially when it comes to avoiding certain areas. I wanna repeat what you just said for the benefit of folks listening. We have to avoid habitat, especially for the what you just, the one you just mentioned, for the species, the Prebble's jumping mouse, even though proof has not been found that it exists. And this is a complaint I've heard a lot about. That is because it is costly to do those studies, but the habitat itself is so valuable that we are federally not allowed to cross that land, right? That we would have to go through impact studies essentially, and those are very costly and time-consuming, et cetera.
What we would have to do is a survey if they're there, and we know they're right across the street. So i- in all likelihood, they are there. If they are there, then we would need from the federal government what's called a takings permit. Basically, you are taking habitat and potentially taking individual endangered species. The Prebble's jumping mouse actually has a higher level of protection than our burrowing owl does.
Right. And that is something I know, and I want residents to hear that, right? Okay, thank you. Now I just wanna talk about some of the costs that were included. I noticed in the estimate, it said that we would require approximately four hundred thousand a year for five years for uh extra contracting services to manage the land, totaling about two million to adequately restore the open hill space. And so, and then after an annual operating cost, I think it said it went down to two hundred thousand, uh just from memory. Could you expand on what it is that needs to be done to restore the land?
Sure. Uh I'll start with, th- those estimates are based on 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 what we know in practice. So we estimate an area of land that requires complete restoration at about ten thousand dollars an acre. And that's cost for seed. That's cost for equip. This this, as much as I would love to have volunteers go out and do it, these aren't things that we can do with volunteers. It requires machinery to rip soil. It requires requires seeding. Where we can use volunteers is once that's done, we can start managing the non-natives that come up as we're doing restoration. That's an open avenue. But the ten thousand dollars an acre is total input costs. That's personnel costs, that's material costs to do one acre. The entirety of the four hundred and seventy acres is not all in the same condition. Ten thousand dollars an acre for four four hundred and seventy acres would be four point seven million dollars. We are not suggesting we need to do a total restoration of all four hundred and seventy acres. Preliminary estimates, we're looking at intensive, high-level, high-cost restoration on about half of that with varying costs. So the northeast corner, the the entrance office ends, that would be the highest intensity restoration need. That would be the ten thousand above level. Areas adjacent to our trails, there are some completely barren areas out there. Those would be the high costs. So what, staff projection on that is, we're talking about a two million dollar investment in restoration. Over a period, a mi- a reasonable timeframe that we can actually do this work, you don't do it all at once. The disturbance is too great, so you you phase that in. Reasonably speaking, over five years, we can do a v- a significant amount of restoration. The place would look very different. You do that investment over the number of five years, so we're talking about, excuse me, two million dollar investment for restoration stretched out over five years. Restoration is not a flip of the switch. Our grassland prairies are very slow to grow and recover. We actually look at, from the day I start the project, ten years is when we see it as being back to normal. Three to four years in, you will see big change, but we have to keep investing or everything we've done is lost. So we can do the initial restoration at that two million dollar mark. The next five years, we would be doing a two hundred thousand dollar investment there. That would be keeping up with the ongoing maintenance. Much of the weed control and things, it really, it, they can't be hand-pulled. There are mechanisms that we have to utilize that have cost to it. What I will say is it's a step-down effect, though. Year over year, once we've invested that big initial push in doing the restoration, our ongoing maintenance costs will go down year over year. Maintenance cost of a healthy functioning grassland is very cheap. Fifty dollars an acre is probably a reasonable estimate, but that will take us ten years to get to.
And I want to repeat and emphasize some of what you said that I want folks to be aware of is, as you said, it's an ongoing process to restore the short grass prairies. They are extremely delicate, which is why they are the world's number-one vanishing um ecological, you know, areas, right? They are rapidly disappearing at a rate faster than the Amazon rainforest. And so I just want folks to be aware that what we're trying to protect is a system. And now while we say, okay, this is, you know, an individual system, it's cut out on a piece of land, it is part of a corridor from Mexico to Canada that is disappearing faster than our Amazon rainforest. And so I just want folks to be aware that we do have a responsibility here around it, to protect it in any way we can. And then I also happen to see that the six hundred uh acres that we are all agreeing it can be on leash happens to be majority noxious weeds, right? So that's gonna require a lot of restoration, it sounds like.
There there's some tangle in language between noxious and non-native. And so the the western half, we would classify it as non-native. They are not state-listed controls. The issue here really is the wonderful C dot. Their revegetation specifications for many, many years included a plant called smooth broom. Smooth broom is a grassland. There are, you know, it does have value to, well, for grazing and some value to our bird species. It's not native, and it has a ability to proliferate like nothing else, and so it excludes other things. That is not a species that we are state-mandated to manage. However, good management practice would include us working to eliminate smooth broom, and we would do that little by little. That's a, that's a much more complicated process. We know how to manage the invasives, the non-natives that make up the bulk of the other side. Most of those are there literally because there's a disturbance, because they can out-compete the native. So all we need to do is give them that push, give them that room to grow, and re-establish they, in effect, take care of keeping the non-natives out afterwards. Smooth broom's a different question. Apologize, but it is a really complicated, and I could nerd out for hours. I won't.
And so the last point on this topic I wanna emphasize is to, to going back to the costs around this. The cost, again, this is a delicate ecosystem. You have to have ongoing management. It's extremely expensive to upkeep and to try to preserve. And so the less careful we are, the more it costs the city. And so I just wanna emphasize, if future councils decide that this is a priority, it's gonna cost millions of dollars. And so I, we need to be very careful about what areas we're sectioning off, what areas we are coordinating, what areas, um you know, off-leash dogs are around to roam in. Because the costs only go up, right? And so if we can protect areas so that they're only undergoing annual management, and we can get to that two hundred thousand dollar a year number, that is the lowest we're ever gonna get, right? It only goes up from there. This is a very expensive project. And I think that we should all just be aware that, you know, if we're looking at this from a monetary standpoint, what can we do to not only make our rangers' lives easier, but also to keep the cost for the city down? And I think that that includes protecting certain areas so that we don't have to go through and do the management, right? Because that is, it's not sustainable. I um I have problems with the two million number, uh but again, I think those are future conversations. And so, you know, where do we go from there? I just have a few more questions. The uh, this is, I don't know, this is gray area. The E. coli results from the sampling, uh can we be sure that those results are from dogs? And then I'll have a few follow-up questions from that.
Oh, I can say definitively, it's not just dogs.
Okay.
Not even, no. What we know is the E. coli levels in that ditch are engrossed exceedance of any health standard. But we do know that it exceeds those standards when it enters, and it exceeds those standards when it leaves. So there's, there is certainly an additive fact. Um we know there's dog waste. We know it's washing into the ditch. Bigger picture, what we know is contact with E. coli, whether it's direct by you being in the water or indirect from your dog bringing it back home, is a health risk. That's the statement we're making with E. coli information. Excuse me. E. coli is also, it's easy to monitor and measure. What that tells us is if the E. coli level is not high, we have a number of other pathogens that are also likely present. Giardia and others will also be present in the water at high levels.
So the water is not So the water is not clean. So I think that I asked this a few months ago, I don't know if we got a clear answer about it. But what is the city's responsibility, if any, towards residents and their dogs in regards to the water?
I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that question.
Yeah, we'll have to ask our city attorney kind of his opinion on that. We have spoken with risk management and I think there was some cons- significant concern on their part with regard to the potential risk for the city. Right?
It really depends. The ditch is actually owned by the, by the ditch company. So it's, it's not, I know it appears to be a recreational amenity, but is in fact an irrigation ditch. So if you know anything about water law in Colorado, the ditch company, what is that Dry Creek Valley?
Dry Creek Valley Ditch.
Ditch company, yeah. So they are, they own and technically they would be responsible for what's in the ditch as opposed to the city. It's only a concern because we're aware of it. So, but as far as the city being liable, that's a, that's a separate question.
And perhaps it comes down to whatever our permitting system looks like or whatever annual passes end up looking like, signing a waiver? Because I've heard from the residents firsthand, and of course, I, it doesn't count everyone, but the majority from the guardians are saying, this is not a concern for us. We're willing to take the risk. Why are you worried about the ditch, right? And so that's the majority of feedback I've heard. And so maybe we can address that in a less expensive way, you know? Maybe the city says, this is not, you know, this is your risk. Or we put up a sign that says, this is your risk, right, concerning the water. So I'm putting that out there.
So I, I would just say, at the end of the day, it's going to come down to what Dry Creek Valley ditch wants. They own the water, they own the physical infrastructure there. They can make decisions on that that we, we don't have any right to supersede.
We have an IGA with them in place that allows us to have the one bridge crossing and that's it. We're also, because of that IGA, on the hook for repairing embankments that have been damaged by the use that we have out there. So we will be on the hook for some restoration, re- repair work of the ditch here and there.
Okay. And I think ultimately the message I, that I agree with, that I've heard from the guardians is less is more. You know, they want the land as it is. We don't need to be putting in, you know, obstacle courses. We don't need to be building bridges. We don't need fancy fences, like let's keep it minimalistic. Let's keep it natural in every possible way and let's preserve our dollars in every possible way around this. And how can we preserve a few more acres of that open space and compromise somewhere? And so to that point, I'm asking my counselors, can we preserve just a hundred acres? You know, the very border around the six hundred to give a just that much back so that we're not taking all of this land off of our city's open space allotment? Because more land is not growing, right? We're not going to be gifted more land out of, you know, this is it. And as we know, a lot of our land is built out at this point. It's not just going to appear anymore. And so if we give this up, we are giving up the last, you know, our open space, which is technically our duty to preserve for future generations for always, right? So we give this up, we can't go back. And so, yes, I think that we will take care of it. I don't think it's an all or nothing scenario. I think that our parks will do a, a good job of trying to take care of this area once we allow it to be off-leash. But once we rezone it, if we rezone it, that's that, right? It's no longer part of our open spaces. And so I want us to be very, very conscious of that and see what we can do to really work to meet both the needs of the community and the land in the best way possible. So that's my ask.
Yes. So, uh, I, I like you, Tomas. I, I do.
Thank you.
I, I want to start off because I, 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 I agree with a lot of what Counselor Azadi said. That there are things that we should have already been doing. And what really solidified that for me was the open space stewardship plan, the 2014 plan. That was very well done. I was very, very impressed by that document. And in that document, it specifically calls the dog park open space and dog park. And it has maps of the non-native and noxious weeds, separates them out. It documents what weeds are there, where they are, what grasses are there, where they are. And in 2014, they said that this was an area of high priority. And they even talk about what seeds need to go down, what the process looks like. Very impressive document. So where I'm going with this is in 2014, they knew that the, the open space and dog park had issues with weeds and, 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 you know, documents it very, very well. So I'm just, they didn't recommend changing it from a dog park. And ten years now, ten years later, when they're saying, hey, we have an issue here with our grasslands, we have all these weeds, again, documented by maps where exactly they are, of what, what types. Very, very well done document. Now, ten years later, we're saying, we have an issue with the, the weeds or, or the non-native plants and it's because of the, the dog, um, the, the, um, the dog poop. Well, I, that doesn't make sense to me because this was an issue identified ten years ago that had nothing to do with the dog. So why is it now, ten years later, the do- like, the dogs are the reason? That doesn't, that doesn't make sense. Because at that point in 2014, it'd only been four years of the four hundred and seventy acres being off-leash. So either all of that damage is done in four years, which I highly doubt, but it sounds like what we were told we needed to be doing in 2014 hasn't been done. And now we're saying it's the dogs, but it wasn't the dogs ten years ago.
I would agree with you a hundred percent that what was outlined in the 2014 report should have been done. And it has not been done because the resources have not been allocated to that purpose. For example, the report calls for an investment of, I believe it's seventeen.
One thousand seven hundred and thirteen.
One thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars per acre, per year. Our budget allows for five hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year. That's a pretty big gap. And that doesn't even take into account all the inflation since 2014.
I, I hear you on that. I'm just saying that I don't think it's fair to blame the dogs when this was an issue before it could have been the dogs. I, that doesn't seem like, according to the stewardship plan, it doesn't seem like a, a fair representation.
If I may, the stewardship plan, one of the big things that the stewardship plan calls, called for was a complete survey of all of the open space for invasive weeds. So at the time the survey, at the time the open space stewardship was written in 2014, there had not been a complete survey. What you are seeing in, in the 2014 stewardship is just an identification of what is here. It's not an, in any indication of where it is or what the spread is.
Oh, no, there were maps.
I, I'm aware of the maps. I started here in 2018. Twenty eighteen was the first year that we began developing a system-wide mapping and monitoring system for our invasive species. What I can tell you is it's not that nothing has happened since 2014. I have staff members here in the room that every year they are invested in managing non-native species. And in the list of non-native species in the open space stewardship plan includes for that property, several that we have completely eradicated. All List A species that were on that property in 2014 are gone. That includes Russian olive, that includes Myrtle spurge, among many others. Those are the number one priorities set by the state. Get rid of your Class A, first move to Class B. What we can say is, it isn't, I, I, in no way I'm saying that dogs are bringing weeds to the system. That's a, that's not the case. What is happening is we can't do the control we need. We ca- and fighting invasive species is an ever-ending game if you don't restore the grassland. So we mow for Kosha, we spray for Kosha, we deal with Alyssum, but those are Band-Aids. And the number one reason that we have this ever-expanding, and I can show it to you on the trails, I can show you how that band of Koshas has expanded over years. It's a disturbance event. Excuse me, our native grasslands are very slow growing. They grow over decades. They grow root bases that are fourteen feet into the ground. The non-natives are very fast-growing. So as soon as we go out there and we run around and we displace the plants, we start creating bear spots, the things that come back are our invasives. We are fighting a losing game. We will continue to do the management efforts. I, I really want to point out, there are staff here that work very hard to implement what's in the 2014 system. We cannot successfully restore that area in the presence of the constant disturbance. And that's the issue that we're trying to deal with.
Okay, so you're saying that the maps that I looked at yesterday in the 2014 comprehensive plan aren't real maps because you didn't start mapping until four years later?
What I'm saying is the 2014 maps were done as part of that 2014 open space stewardship plan, which looked at a gross level of our whole system. It did not do fine-tune mapping on the ground. We have done that.
Then why did it show me maps where it showed exactly what?
Showing you specific species, it's talking about Russian olive, it's talking about trees. That's, that absolutely is correct. Those are easy. It did not map where all our Class A species were. It didn't show you where individual plants of Myrtle spurge were out there that are no longer there because we've done the effort of, of removing them over the last decade.
Regardless, my point is that in 2014, this was identified as an issue. It was not identified in, as an issue because of dogs. And ten years later, you are saying the issue is because of dogs. That is my point, that is.
The 2014 stewardship plan clearly states, and I, I will say, we're slow. I, I mean, I started here in 2018. This was one of the things that has been on my target list to do forever. The stewardship plan calls out specifically for an area management plan for Westminster Hills. That's what we're doing. We needed more data. It didn't make a statement whether dogs are responsible or not. What it said is, we have a problem here, there's things that need to be done to manage that. Take the actions necessary. No question, we could have started earlier.
If the resources had been available.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my thoughts in order. One of the things, um, this is, this has been a very disappointing process. This process has eroded community trust and government. We've been told that by many people, we've been hearing it over and over. So that tells me that we made some mistakes. Is it correct that for the Who's Cat that we hired a facilitator?
Correct.
So is it correct that a facilitator's job is to facilitate the meetings to move forward so you get through everything that you should be getting through?
Yes.
To me, when we only got through two of, was it ten priorities? That tells me that that facilitator was not doing a very good job because that's a facilitator's job is to facilitate movement forward, especially in a, a group of people who don't always agree. How much did we pay that facilitator?
I believe it was, I were in negotiations with them, but I believe it was nine thousand dollars at the top end. And is that correct?
It's a little less than nine thousand.
A little less than that, so I can get to that exact amount.
Okay, I know there were some core requests that were done and the number that I was told from those core requests is ten thousand dollars.
No.
Well, nine thousand isn't far from ten thousand. I, I, if, for, um, that just seems like a, a really gross misuse of funds, especially seeing that the facilitator did not facilitate past two priorities. And there are folks who feel that that is a not-good use of their tax dollars. And as somebody who is on council but who is also a resident, I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I, I don't, I think we should not use that facilitator again in future, future times we might, we might be thinking of using a facilitator.
Yeah, I do appreciate your feedback on that. I will point out that, uh, that was one of the meetings where we did not accomplish the whole agenda that we had set out to, to do. Absolutely, we only bit, covered two of them. That was just one of the meetings. We covered a lot in the other meetings that we had.
The mayor was there.
Yeah, she was.
And the mayor said that she was worried that they had one more meeting left, that they weren't going to be able to get through everything because you had only gone through two of ten. So this is not even just everything I've been hearing from constituents. This is things I've, I've heard.
No, it's, it's absolutely accurate.
Okay, um, you, you make comments like, you know, the, the bird population could decrease by fifty percent, but you didn't give a timeframe. This has been a dog park for twenty-four years. And if it hasn't happened, why, why, what, what time key? That's not, that doesn't give any information unless you're giving a timeframe or that's just a, a state, it could happen, but in what timeframe? Where are you getting that from? And has that, has it decreased in, by fifty percent in the last twenty-four years?
Allow me to turn over to our SME here.
The, the fifty percent reduction comes directly from firsthand research, not on this site, but insights in the front range. That, that research is in your packet, you have access to that.
Right.
What the fifty percent is, that disturbance, it's an immediate impact. So what that is saying is the potential for this land to support bird species in this case is immediately reduced by fifty percent based on the off-leash. We can't do a before and after because we've always had off-leash dogs there. Unless I went back to nineteen ninety-nine, did a survey of bird population to, to compare it to today. There is no question in the scientific community, none, that dogs off-leash have a significant detrimental impact, not just on bird populations. Because again, bird populations are just the indicator for the whole health. It is not in dispute that the presence of off-leash dogs disproportionately affects wildlife.
So immediately, i- 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 immediately by fifty percent, so twenty-four years ago? So that happened twenty-four years ago?
What I'm saying.
It is my turn to talk, thank you.
My apologies, what I'm, so it, what we know in that area, in two thousand, it was a thirty-three acre or twenty-seven acres, it depends on who did the mapping and when. But if I mapped it today, it would be about twenty-eight acres. That was defined in the northeast corner. There's two factors involved here. It is the type of use and the volume of use, and they work together. The impact to bird species based on off-leash dogs, the biggest impact is the first insult. That's, I apologize, it's not meant to demean dogs, that's how we refer to changes in an ecosystem. The first impacts are the most powerful. So the first few dogs off-leash have the greatest impact. After that, it's a After that, it's a decline. So, as the volume of use expanded, and if you look at the Open Space Stewardship Plan, the Stewardship Plan actually does show a dog park, but it still is only referencing that original twenty-seven acres. And if you read the language of the Stewardship Plan, it talks about off-leash dogs in seventy acres. What we have seen is, especially with the addition of the new parking lot on One Hundredth, we dramatically increased the volume of use. Year over year, we know the volume of use has gone up. We know the area in which off-leash dogs are has expanded dramatically. It went from just using the corner to being concentrated on the northern part of the system, to now being across the whole system. So, when you saw the habitat maps there, what we are showing you with that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, that's what's left for those birds to nest. And that's what we're talking about. They will not nest between the edge of the trail and that two-fifty. There's also, that the reason you get a fifty percent reduction in species is, or species and numbers, is because now you have taken the volume of habitat that's available and compressed it. There are so, only so many nesting locations in that little box. The bigger the box is, the more nesting locations, therefore, the more birds. We don't need to do a direct measurement to apply the facts of the science to this situation.
Right, I, I feel like that further proves my point by saying, um, by pointing out in the 2014 that they, they didn't show the dog park being that whole area, but they showed how degraded it was at that point in time, which further proves the point that it's, it wasn't the dogs. It, it wasn't the dogs that created the, the issue. Um, so, um, I also agree, um, with Counselor Demott that there are things that we could have been trying already to mitigate some of the issues. Um, I don't think that we should start off by just taking hundreds of acres away. I think we need to start on the individual issues, including land management, and we need to be working on those. I don't, I think just starting off by getting rid of, you know, hundreds or a hundred eight, or any of the, I, I just, that, that doesn't, I think that there are so many other things we could be trying. Um, also, um, a third of our land is parks and open space. And I, I agree, we need to protect our parks and open space. Um, we will not be selling our parks and open space, we will not be getting rid of it. Um, a third of Westminster, that's part of what makes Westminster so special. A third of our city will not be developed on. That's, uh, tha- that's one of the things I, I love about living here. But it, it's not true that if we give this up, we can't go back because we've rezoned areas already. This area has been rezoned, we're talking about rezoning again. It doesn't mean that another council, five, ten years down the road, can't decide to rezone it something else. So, that's, that's not true. And we're not giving anything up. The land is still the, the land. We're, we're not, we're not putting apartments or building. The, the land is still, we can rezone it, but it's still effectively treated as, as, as open space. Um, and, um, I guess, um, I, I would like to see a community board. I, I thought, um, that was a really good idea, having a community board, having them, um, yearly, um, do strategic planning. Um, if our residents want to, um, take ownership and responsibility, I think that we should help with that. Um, also, um, earlier, uh, there was, uh, talk about a community meeting being scheduled after June third. Has that been scheduled?
No.
Is it going to be scheduled?
I think it really depends on the outcome of tonight's discussion.
Wouldn't the community want a meeting no matter what the outcome is?
Uh, I don't know.
I, I think that they, they've been told that's what we're gonna do, and I, they would like to have that, and I, I don't think it matters what we choose. Um, they still need to be in the loop of what decisions were made. So, if we could have that scheduled because that was, we were told that it was gonna be scheduled, um, that would be great. Um, and then, the last thing I, I want to say is, um, I'm very disappointed in how the Guardians have been treated because this is what I see. I see that everybody was surprised that there, uh, was plans to drastically reduce the dog park, including those of us on council. Um, and we had a group of residents who felt really passionate, come together really quickly. Um, and they have done their own volunteer cleanups because you're saying E. coli is an issue, the dog poop is an issue with the, you know, the native plants. So, so without even the city having to, to organize this on their own, they have organized their own pickups. Um, they have, they have, so I've been meeting with them. Their plan that they introduced, they did talk to bikers. They actually knocked on doors of the adjacent neighborhoods and asked the neighbors who live in those neighborhoods, you know, what they would like to see. They got sign-off from neighbors, from, uh, bikers, from people who use that space other than the dog park in their plan. I was very impressed that they knew how to do stakeholder-ing the way that ele- an elected should do stakeholder, or, or even, you know, staff. They, very impressive. And so, I see, um, a group of people who are saying, we didn't know there was an issue. You've now let us know that there's an issue, and we are willing to do everything we can to mitigate those issues. At the end of the day, our parks and our, our open space are for our residents. And to have residents take ownership and be willing, when they find out that there's an issue, to do what they can to mitigate that, to me, I think that's the best outcome possible. And, and they've been disregarded because they're not elected or they're not staff. But why do we have elects? Why do we have staff? It's to take care of the city for our residents. It's so our residents, you know, have a voice. I was elected so our residents would have a voice. Um, and overwhelmingly, um, people are willing to help. Um, it just seems like there, there wasn't any warning. Um, and I really think that we need to be respecting our residents more than what I've seen with the Guardians, um, because they're, they're why we're here. I mean, not just the Guardian, Guardians specifically, but all of our residents. Um, it's interesting, so I, I went and got my haircut today. And my, um, the, my hairdresser was like, so what's going on with city council? Because she knows I'm on city council. So, I told her about the dog park. And immediately, three other people in the salon was like, well, that sounds terrible, reducing the dog park, you know, and they didn't even know anything about it. Like, they just like learned of, you know, council's considering reducing the dog park, and they're like, that would be terrible. Yeah, these are people who didn't even know who are residents, because I do get my haircut, um, nearby. And, um, and, and even just hearing it for the first time, they're like, that, that, that's, that's terrible. Um, so I just think that we could be, um, a little bit more respectful, um, to our residents, especially residents, that's what you want. You want engaged residents. You want people who are passionate and engaged. And then when we disrespect them, and when we tell them that their interpretation of the cat is, you know, not true, or, um, you know, it, it was great even though they're saying it wasn't great. Um, I, I just, I don't think that's fair. Um, and so, I, I, I think that we should try other avenues before we reduce the dog park. So, I, I'm in chain, or I'm in favor of not changing, um, the area of the dog park, um, but I'm in favor of looking at parking permitting. I'm, you know, I, I completely agree with both Counselor Azadi and Counselor Demott that there are things that we should be trying before we just automatically take it away. Um, and, and I would like to see, um, when we have people who are engaged. And also, you know, I, before I ran for office, I always found it frustrating when I would see polls where, you know, sixty, seventy percent of a, a, a population wanted something, and the elects did the exact opposite. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. Um, so, yeah, um, I, I, I respect you very much, but I also respect our residents. And, and even, um, even though I like you, it doesn't mean that I'm not gonna, when I see things that I, I don't think are, are right, um, I'm, I'm still gonna, going to, uh, bring it up. So, a- again, if we could get that community, uh, meeting scheduled, and I think there's a lot of things that, um, we could be trying, and I, I very much agree with, um, Counselor, um, Azadi.
Thank you.
Great. Just want to thank staff. I know it's a hard position to be in tonight, just being on the other side of lots of hard questions. So, um, thank you for, again, also, all of the information that you've provided. And, um, I just wanted to, I, I'll, I'll try and be shorter. Um, so, I think just, I wanted to make some comments, um, on one, you know, as a community, we, we very much value our open space, it's, it's who we are. Um, and, um, maintaining it and putting money towards that and actually having a tax dedicated to that is, um, is evidence of that and what we've been able to preserve over the years. So, um, I think that, um, Counselor Carmelia brought up a lot of good points regarding the value of the open space and that it also kind of reaches beyond our jurisdiction and contributes to a larger, um, environment and role. Um, I've also seen, you know, that through the, you know, the testimony from the public that, um, it certainly has a, a key element of our social network within the community, and that also is something that we need to balance. Um, once we know that that's there, um, that this is something that we can integrate into a management plan for the site. Um, I actually had the opportunity to figure out how to do a park management plan years ago as a consultant, did a lot of research, um, and, uh, looked at other park management plans, got to understand for, for this one particularly, there were going to be horse trails going through and how, how, um, damaging those can be, for example, just, um, to, and, and difficult to maintain. So, um, had my eyes opened over that, um, many years ago. And so, I know that people and animals do have an impact. Um, I think it makes sense to, um, you know, if we're going to, uh, maintain this area that we actually put, uh, energy and effort and dollars into it. I mean, it's, you know, from the Open Space Stewardship Plan back from twenty fourteen. We haven't been funding it. I was here at the city, I know what we were funding, I know what we were, you know, trying to balance. And, um, you know, those capital, and, and I would say caveat to all of us when we go through the budget process. I mean, this is millions of dollars regardless of which direction, you know, we necessarily go. We're gonna put money towards this if we care about the quality of the space. And, um, that's gonna be a choice for us, just like it's been a choice every year over how much we're putting towards this area. Um, the, you know, one thing I want to remind us all that, um, we are maintaining the largest dog park in the state. That was pretty significant to see how, how large it is. I would actually, I don't know, have, have you done any, um, research as to kind of what the staffing slash maintenance complement is for those other dog parks?
Uh, at the, the state DOLA ones, we have not tracked that down, but that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, I would be, um, very interested in kind of knowing what that looks like so that we can kind of potentially apply that, or, you know, maybe they have some brilliant meth, I don't know. Something to work. Um, I actually appreciate that, um, our cat was inclusive, and, um, I have, as a planner, pulled together steering committees of folks that are on very different and opposite sides of the earth, and consensus was sometimes not to be found. And however, it's an opportunity. I wouldn't give up on cats even in a conflicting, um, situation because I think regardless of whether you get to consensus, you still get the, the listening venue. And so, I, I don't want us to just, just because this was, yeah, not as, you know, the outcome of everybody like holding hands and, you know, um, being happy about the, the final outcome doesn't mean it's not a worthy thing to do. Um, and I would say that, um, compromise actually means that no one's happy. Uh, it means that everybody's giving something. So, I think in this, um, you know, as we look at how do we move forward? Um, you know, I, I originally, uh, was trying to understand, you know, is there some way to kind of rotate the area for dogs? Like, how does that work with five and ten-year rehabilitation timelines? I don't know. Um, I'd, you know, still be.
Not well.
Yeah.
That was a, so the 2014 Stewardship Plan talks about that a bit. Because at the time, the 2014 Stewardship Plan was written, uh, the Cherry Creek Plan had just come out, and that was sort of their proposal. Cherry Creek gave up on it after three years. The, the time it takes to restore grasslands, y- y- you, you're just, you're chasing your tail in that, right? You restore it, you, you move over here, restore, and you open this back up, and you've lost what you've restored. It's, it's not the best investment of your dollars.
Yeah, so, I, I, I think you, from the information you've provided, um, that kind of. Um, so, um, for me, I'm, I'm leaning towards wanting to have some compromise here and, um, you know, preserving some of the space on, for just habitat and some of the space for, you know, the, a good amount of space. You know, I like option two in that it does provide, it's still the largest area, it still provides a good amount of area for those opportunities for people to kind of feel free. Um, it's a good, you know, large enough area where, um, hopefully, people don't feel overly crowded in, in that, in, um, in that space. I would love to know if there's a way to accomplish that without having to move the greenway trail. I don't know, like, if this clouded, if there's some magic to this shape.
No, I, I think that that's something we could certainly explore. It's a ton of money.
Moving the trail is, yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a really good idea.
And, um, so a couple of things, uh, just, one on the removal of the Sims parking lot. I'm just hoping that we can potentially try and manage that lot better. And I think, uh, several of us are, um, have expressed the interest of that, and, you know, potential for an annual pass that, and/or a parking permit or some way, particularly if it's not a resident. Um, if it's non-resident annual pass, and our residents get, you know, pay like, I don't know, a dollar or nothing. Um, and maybe we meter that, you know? We could play with the cost of that annual pass to help meter the, you know, the people. And, you know, I think, it, let's put our Westminster residents first in the use of this, but maybe we play a little bit with how many, you know, what we're allowing for and inviting in elsewhere. Um, question I have for you is, uh, you talked a little bit about, um, the, the trails. There's a lot of trails that go through there and that there might be some opportunity to kind of reduce the number of trails. I don't know if that, you know, I would probably want to know more from the community, would they feel that's good or not, I mean?
So, I, I'll be blunt and say, our trail system out here is not a planned, designed trail system. We adopted what people were doing on the land. That's not the best way of building a trail system. We can certainly do better. One of the issues we have is, even as we have an adopted trail system and, and the major use trails, we have no, no way of keeping people on that. major use trails, we have no, no way of keeping people on that system. There's currently no regulatory, there's no rule, there's nothing that says you have to be on our trails. So, when we try and close new trails, and, and I think there's a number of overhead year-over-year shots, you can see where different trails appear, sometimes they disappear. When we make efforts to close them, sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not, it, and, there's no, there, again, there's not a regulatory mechanism, there's not something that allows us, as it is now, to really close and restore trails.
I think I'd like to address that, put my landscape architect hat on and just say, a well-designed trail system that allows different options, um, would meet the various needs of, of the visitor. We have folks out there, uh, and the guardians who are very, very helpful in understanding that there are people that go out there that cannot walk three miles. They can do maybe a half an hour, not much. And so, we need to offer looping trails that allow people to choose short, medium, long walks, and then provide really clear signage that allows them to make the choices. Um, I do believe that partnering with, um, the community, partnering with volunteers and the guardians, we could come to agreements around something like a trail system and really together make sure, with the addition of some enforcement folks, um, that people adhere to those trails and understand how important it is for them to stay on the trails so that then we can invest the money in restoring these landscapes and not waste that money. I, I personally believe, oh gosh, you know, I spent thirty-seven years working in public-private partnerships on the private side. I believe in, in volunteers, I believe that the guardians could be a great partner for us. We have to have really clear understanding about who does what, who's responsible for what, who has authority, but with that in place, boy, we could do great things out there. I do not disagree with that at all.
As a person who goes off-trail all the time, terrible about it, I know, I'm married to a Boy Scout who yells at me about it, but, uh, so, let's see, um, okay, that I asked that question. Okay. Okay, a random question that came up when, um, Counselor Carmelia was asking about EKAWI. Just that if we're concerned about it here, but it's also present when it's leaving and coming, do we care about it elsewhere?
Uh, well, we have met with the ditch company, they have expressed some concerns, um, but I think that there's more conversations that need to be had around the ditch and how we can best manage it, uh, for people's health and safety. Um, I think there's some, a lot of conversation and discussion that still needs to be had around that topic to figure it out. Um, you know, we don't wanna just ban people from using the ditch for, you know, their dogs' entertainment, but if it's something that's causing significant health issues, then we need to have a conversation about that. At least let people know, so that they, if they make the choice that they're still gonna take that risk, well, they making that choice, but we need to let people know.
Yeah, I think signage would be good.
Absolutely.
Fencing is kinda eh, but...
There's public contact with it. That is the only stretch of Dry Creek Valley ditch that the peo- that public can get to. When it crosses the street, it, you look, there's big fencing, it's already fenced off, and then the rest of it is in the, uh, excuse me, in the enclosure area of the Eagle where there's no public access. So, in terms of people getting in contact with the water, this is where that issue arises.
Got it. Okay. Uh, let's see. Um, I guess the other thing that I was kinda hoping to see a little bit more of, but maybe it's something you flesh out, um, after, like, in, in the next phase, I, I do appreciate that you have all the things that we could do. Um, and, you know, a general cost, so that is, this is helpful. Um, but I, what I kinda wanna see on the other side are, what are potential revenue sources to help, help offset this, and also, are there potential, um, you know, uh, fundraising opportunities that we could develop for this site? So, and when we come down to really budgeting this, I'd wanna have a better understanding of what potential revenues might we be able to get. And I would say, you know, we could even utilize, um, uh, parking, uh, the parting, parking, sorry, it's late, shut him down, um, the, the revenues that we pull in from the citations, perhaps it's localized and, and applied here. Um, uh, you know, or could potentially kind of feed into, obviously, the maintenance of that, but are there additional revenues that can, that we can creatively pull into this area?
Yeah, definitely, I definitely think there are opportunities for additional revenues. Something that I've been wanting to explore is possibility of, uh, license plate, um, parking payment. Uh, I know it can be completely automated, I know you can program it so that, you know, residents are paying a certain rate and other people pay a different rate, um, but I do think that that's something that would also help with, um, perhaps, um, reducing some of the demand. And there is a carrying capacity issue here that we're exceeding. Um, it is a lot of people and dogs using it from all over, which is great, but I do think we need to look at ways to try and tamp that down. Charging a little bit for parking is a way to do that, that would also create a revenue stream for us.
Yeah, I think, I think here, let's definitely think about what's helpful or not, you mean, maybe it's a certain hour, amount of hours free, so you get turnover, um, but, you know, but charging for parking, and especially if you do it with the apps and everything, it can be, it's, it's a thing, and it can be a, kind of an annoyance, so, if, I would prefer that we'd add, we'd, maybe like kind of a toll road or something, like the passes, if they're monthly or if they're annual or something, that you kind of price them in a way to help meter the population and/or do some timed. Um, I mean, I'm not a, you know, if, if you wanna go that route, but it is kind of annoying.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. All right.
So, you went with?
Some variation of option two.
Okay, and I know it's an hour and fifteen minutes into our next presentation, so, um, I did attend everything and was shocked when I went to the parks, um, orientation, and I, I, I don't think I ever went to the restroom, I don't think I ever left the building, and to see no parking on, in, any of those four, I don't know when that was discussed. I have no clue, because it, we didn't discuss it.
That's true.
Um, so, shock number one. Um, we never discussed regional or local, um, as a group, um, and at the time, we were looking at a million visitors, w- we know we have at least seven hundred and fifty thousand, up to more. Um, I think that's, that's one issue that has to be decided. Um, do we keep it local, or do we open it up and have fees for other people that, that want to do it? And, um, for two different things, I'm not about five dollars, I mean, if they're out, we are spending to our taxpayers' dollars, they need to, the pay. Um, I'm not averse to, if you wanna come and use our facility, you, you get to pay. Um, we've talked about the last seven years and not, not much being done, and, and, you know, I asked the question after twenty-four years, why, why are we here? Um, talked about the parking. Um, a separate issue that I've already talked to, um, Mr. Frankel about is, in this entire city, this is not just out at this dog park. We need stiff fines for people that do not pick up their furry babies' waste, because, uh, and, and I'm for three hundred dollars. I mean, let's make it so it smarts and that they know we mean business. I'm in, in the midst of four apartment buildings. One of them has six different places to get a bag, to dispose of a bag, and they still have to hire somebody to clean their yard. Disgusting. Um, and so, our entire city needs education, our entire city, and we need a policy. We need the animal management people in here that will tell you, writing a ticket is, it takes a half an hour, you can't do it, you have to see him doing, not doing, it's a mess. We need to figure out something that works, and I don't care if we have to get DNA from every dog in the city. Um, but I'm serious, this is an issue, it's not just out there, any place you're walking, you will find problems that they're dealing with, and you're gonna find it downtown.
Absolutely.
And I can tell you, if you don't raise those flower beds, you're not gonna have flowers. I watch it at the Weston. So, it's an issue, and we need to be smart about what we do with these things. Um, I was disappointed with the cap because we got started, we had these things we were gonna do, we got into two issues, we then, for whatever reason, we had to keep narrowing and get done. The night we were supposed to be done, we had to negotiate another full hour because they hadn't done their maps yet. Um, we lost two people to that because they had to go. Um, and I don't know if they could've come to consensus, because they listened to one another, they all had strong feelings, but yet, when it came to the maps, some didn't do a map, some did choose a map, and with the guardians, and I have theirs up here, um, with theirs, with, they drew it, and they did know, they had mental health, they had people with wheelchairs, they had people with other disabilities, and how to make paths that make sense for people that can't do the full three-mile loop. And, and they drew that, and they knew exactly what they were drawing, and three other groups signed on to this map. They didn't make their own map. So, I, people need to know that, there were other groups that signed off onto their map. Um, uh, it was just frustrating because I believe in people, and these people cared about an issue, whether they, you know, whether it was the neighborhood issues, and we, we have to address that, because I am not for taking parking out. Um, and, um, we know from the people that live across the street, we've got to have it closing at night because we've got drug deals or whatever's happening over there. We can't expect police to be there all the time, but we can close it off so nobody can use it. Um, we know that for a fact, so, take, we need to take care of it. We know how to do the parking, Stanley Lake has done it for all the years it's been in existence, and, um, they can get used to it and do it. Um, if, and, and if they don't want to, then they have people on their street, but closing off that parking and then knowing people are gonna go into their neighborhood to park, and then we have the mess of people trying to cross Sims to get over there, um, we're gonna have people killed, hit. It's not gonna, i- i- it doesn't make sense to me. It, it made no sense when I saw the parking Xed Out. Um, and I'm sorry we didn't get, it was obvious the last meeting, we needed that other, at least, meeting, 'cause we took an hour of a second meeting. Um, I would've loved to have heard some of the discussion, just to see where we did end up. Um, because these people were passionate, they listened to one another, and I don't know what they would come up with, so now it's in our lap. Um, I, I'm, I, it's been there twenty-four years, I obviously have voted on this before, when I was here before, when they expanded it, um, so, I'm for option one. I do know, we have two people that have asked if we'd maybe go to three hundred and take off a hundred. Um, I just lay that out there because that's been asked, and I want it done quickly. It's either a yes or a no, so that we can get on to the next presenters.
Can I say one sentence instead?
All right.
I would be okay with three hundred after a year of keeping this the same and seeing what we do with the volunteers and being creative with all these various other areas, but not right now.
Okay. All right, I'm in agreement with, uh, Counselor Azadi.
That just means that we're rezoning something, no matter what. So, that means that we can't go back, right? Remember that, can't go back. So, we're rezoning, just know that. But obviously, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Yan.
I agree with, um, Counselor Azadi, and I think we need to rezone our recreation.
Can I ask a question? Again, I apologize, I had to go, I couldn't help it. Why can't we go back on rezoning? If we rezoned something once, why couldn't we rezone it again?
We can rezone it, but the question is, we're giving up our open space, which we're not supposed to give up open space, so we're...
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, exactly. And so, we would be developing it depending on construction.
Gotcha. Um, but, you know, I wanted, and again, I apologize, but I would wanna dig into that a little bit. It's, oh, but it's still protected under whatever we do, so it's not like it would just be open to development, like, we still have safeguards around it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Just making sure, something didn't change while I was upstairs.
It would become a park, I think.
Um, I, I'm much like you guys, I, I would like to, and I think I mentioned this earlier, I, I think that we have some options that we need to address before we make that drastic change, and then we can reevaluate it. Um, and since I have time, I would like to second what the mayor said, and I think that's a citywide issue. I can tell you, and if they're listening tonight, know I have cameras in front of my house. Somebody thinks that that's okay to let their dog do in my yard, and, you know, that's a, an irritating thing, so, I do think that we need to figure that out. So, I would be in favor of what us having our city attorney's office look at some ways to address some of that issue, so.
I hear us going with option one, with some variations that people all talked about, you have it down.
Can I, can I just ask, I mean, I, I think if the, I would love for there to be like one more cat to, to sort of take all of this information and, you know, go back to the community and see what they'd be willing to do, like, is, you know, knowing that there's interest also in open space as well as just maintaining as big of a dog park as possible, just to give the community that opportunity to have the conversation? Um, before we all just sort of say, you know, X, Y, Z, I would love to sort of just throw it back and say, guys, what do you, is there something you could come to agreement on, to your point? I mean, there was so much good that came out of those conversations. Um, and I also, you know, it, this is gonna be money to maintain and to, to properly maintain, and obviously having the in, the input on what it's gonna cost us, I mean, that may play into some decision that we don't currently, you know, have yet, but, all that being said, I mean, I, I, I see where it's going, I was just thinking, you know, could the community kind of weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think that, that the key here is, is that we started this conversation out with, what's the level of service that the council wants to provide? And the council just voted five to two, um, not voted officially, but, you know, five folks in favor of providing a level of service of four hundred and seventy acres, and so, you know, this, that's what the staff needs at this point. Now, we got a whole bunch of things to go work, and we'll certainly involve, you know, the guardians and the cat and all, and folks like that, subject matter expert groups, but, you know, I mean, things that I know that we need to get hot on right now as a staff is, um, in the budget process, we need to look at increasing staff, increasing maintenance funding, um, and, uh, starting to develop the, uh, open space specific to WHO's CIP, and, most importantly, we gotta get the ordinance language fixed so that we're not in violation of our own ordinances as we are right now. And so, that's a big piece, and as I mentioned, back in April, you know, that comes down to what, uh, you change it from open space to parkland. That's, that's the key, that's the council, you know, making, bringing us in line with our open, our correction, our ordinances. So, we gotta do that.
Can I ask real, real quick, just a quick question? When we say option one, it's not the existing one where it's, the existing one says to take out Sims parking lot, we're saying keep Sims, option one, keep Sims. Okay, just to be clear.
And then figure out what we gotta do with the, the ditch and conversations with the ditch company.
Can I get real quick a, a new number of what our, uh, new open space acreage would be?
Uh, well, if we take four hundred and seventy out of thirty-eight hundred, so, five hundred off of thirty-eight hundred, it would be about thirty-three hundred.
Thank you.
Counselor Yan.
I don't think we asked to increase staff, we asked to use more volunteers and see how it goes for you.
Counselor, I heard, I heard you... Counsel, I heard, I heard you say that. I didn't hear the rest of the council agree to that. Um, but, you know, frankly, um, we already know that, you know, best practice is 600, for every 600 acres of open space, um, we've got, um, uh, one, uh, open space steward. So if you're down to 3,300, you're at seven. That's three above what we're asked, um, what we're currently at. And oh, by the way, now we're converting this dog's, uh, space into, you know, some kind of parkland. I'm not sure what that's gonna look like, but that's gonna take people too. So, I mean, if, if you wanna maintain this level of service of 470 acres and do it right, then it's gonna cost money.
Well, I think what we're saying, we want volunteers to run it for a year, or help run it, and see where it is.
And if you listen to, uh-
I don't think I wanna add a bunch of more people.
And if you listen to Mr. Reality, Mr. Reality explained that the restoration part of that, you know, and getting this, uh, grassland to grow-
But it's not gonna be, it's gonna be recreation. It's not gonna be open space.
It's park.
Yeah, it's park.
It's park, right.
Which is not the same.
So you, if you're saying that you're willing to let it go barren?
Well, it's been like that for 24 years. We haven't done anything. Our 10 years, we haven't done anything.
But, but if you wanna, it's only gonna degrade if you don't try and maintain it.
It's a year. Uh, we would maintain it how you've been maintaining it, plus volunteers.
Okay.
And we haven't let the volunteers do their job.
Counselor Duma.
Somewhere in between. I definitely want you to incorporate volunteers however we can, because they, they did go out, and, I mean, that was a fun thing that the community do, go, when I first was on council, figure out how much crap they could pay up and never measure it, and people enjoyed it. Um, but one of the things that I just wanna make sure is, what you're bringing back, um, man, city manager is, in the budget process, that we see some of those levers too, though, that we talked about, such as like parking and stuff, 'cause I do think, you know, I'd like to see some variations of what we could, how we could play with it. I've heard some folks say, you know, they'd be open to residents, you know, potentially a small one. I'd prefer it not, but, so if we could get some options in that, just like we do with most of the budget things, I think that would be helpful to us. Um, the other thing that I would ask, um, and I'm glad that the, uh, mayor brought this up as far as the, those parking spaces, there could be, besides like, you know, hours, there could also be some technology implemented, because I've, again, I live over there, so I see some stuff, you know, driving down Sims late at night. So, you know, potentially, if you, we could put cameras at least in the parking areas, people would know they're there, and you're probably gonna lessen that because, so that might be something we run by our PD and see if they think that's useful. And I only bring that up now, because if you're gonna bring something back in the budget, if they have something that would be useful, I'd like to see that in the, those budget recommendations.
That's a good segue for our next-
Yeah.
-session.
Take a final minute.
Absolutely.
Hey. Get your last food.
All right, before I turn it over to our budget folks, the mayor, mayor pro town and council. This is a meeting that we would have normally done in early August. That's kind of the rhythm that the city's on. And because we wanted to start early and be more deliberative in our process and take a little bit more proactive approach. We've pushed this to early June now. And so this gives us an opportunity to provide updates to you to start the conversations. If you want to follow up, you know, if you don't think of something tonight that you want to ask a question on, by all means, ask. You know, let's open the dialogue and make sure that there's a good, healthy dialogue going through this budget process. But I think that for tonight, you know, we just heard that, you know, there may be some things that we should consider for our budget process. For 2025 as part of the conversations we just had, we'll certainly take those on. But if the council as a whole has something that, you know, you're just burning for us to dive into or to take a good hard look at. Let us know what that is so we get a head start. But again, you know, really getting down into some, some good information tonight. And I'm going to pitch it over to our assistant city manager, Chris Lindsay, and our policy budget administrator, Erin Fariter. They're going to lead us through the budget presentation tonight. And then we've got some of our subject matter experts that will rotate up and speak to specific items. So.
Did they bring their pillows?
Not yet, no.
I was going to ask for one.
It's actually women here too.
Oh, cool.
Are you really?
Well, you know, when you're under a hundred pounds, you're freezing.
So anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you and good evening, council. Again, Chris Lindsay, assistant city manager, joined with, by Erin Fariter, our policy and budget administrator. Got our policy and budget team, got our department directors here as well to get policy guidance from city council this evening. Very quickly, we've outlined eight items that we want to cover with you. The first couple of these process, strategic plan, those are just going to be review really of where we are. Then we're going to get into feedback on the town hall, community budget, community project request processes. And a little bit of information about the project requests that we've seen so far. We want to hear from city council if there's any other budget priorities that we haven't, haven't touched so far. Talk briefly about the revenue forecast that the city staff has received from the lead school. And then we're going to hit two, two fee items that we'd like to discuss with council tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to cover our first couple of topics.
All right. Good evening, Erin Fariter, policy and budget administrator. Staff created the 2025 budget process based upon feedback we received during the 2025, or after the 2024 budget process. The SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Based upon that, we understood that our budget structure, as well as how we connect our budget to the strategic plan, are strengths. However, we had opportunities to improve on community engagement, our CIP, capital improvement program, as well as our budget adjustment process. We just want to say thank you for the feedback that you shared with us that has guided how we have established our budget flow. So this is high level in your memo attachment B goes through this in more detail. We are currently on step four, which is our retreat. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to get your feedback and guidance on our budget. So for the next three months, staff can put that to work and develop a budget to release and share with you in August. Our strategic plan is the framework from which our budget is developed. In April, you worked with Barry Dunn to develop your strategic plan. And in early May, you adopted your vision, mission, guiding principles and strategic priorities. We just want to confirm those are the foundation for our budget. Our vision and mission statement. Our seven guiding principles. And our six strategic priorities. These will be the foundation for which the budget will be developed and created. Any concerns?
Does he know fingers?
Sounds good. So when we, when we received the feedback for additional community engagement, not only did we shift how we connected with you, but also with the community. So on May ninth, we held our inaugural budget town hall at City Rec. We had over forty attendees and over, or an additional twelve virtual attendees who participated by completing the same form. We intended the town hall to review and discuss with the community our budget process, as well as to get their feedback on priorities for the 2025 budget. We asked four questions. The first question was, what do you value most about living in the city of Westminster? We've received a diverse array of values during the discussion, each contributing to the overall well-being and vibrancy of the community. Common themes include access to parks and open space, library services and resources, community safety, and supporting small businesses. Together, these values create more vibrant, inclusive and sustainable community for all residents. Additionally, we combined our, our question two and four to ask what the city needs to improve on. Common themes were efforts to support small businesses, improving transparency in communications, better maintenance of open space and parks. The suggestions that we received were shared with all of staff and will be built in how we develop our budget to try and address those to improve how we meet the residents' needs. Our last question was related to the strategic priorities. We asked the residents or those who participated in the town hall to rank them from most important to least important, as you see on the slide. Participants gave examples of ways to invest in these priorities, including but not limited to low income support, such as providing water bill credits for those in need. Access to diverse housing options for ranges, for all ranges of income. Supporting and diversifying businesses within the community to increase sales revenue. And creating and maintaining infrastructure for mobility, connectivity, ADA needs, such as missing sidewalks. Another community engagement tool we utilized was a more formal 2025 request process. Working with the communications teams, team, we developed a form for the community to submit projects and programs. The form was open about four weeks, April twenty fifth through May twenty third. Staff will, will review all of those requests and respond to them as part of the budget process. For that process, we received fifty five requests. Over ninety percent were related to street maintenance projects or safety projects or parks and recreation projects. Here are some of the examples that we received. It's also important to note that we have received other requests through email or through public comment. All of those will be considered and reviewed and will include that as part of the 2025 budget process.
So Erin mentioned, we also received feedback on the SWOT analysis around our capital planning process. So I just wanted to, to remind everyone, we're, we're transitioning to a different process with our, with our budget team this year. With a capital process that's really driven by a partnership between our city engineer and our policy and budget team. We've centralized a lot of that construction within the city engineer's office and CIP management. They're using a prioritization process as we go through development this year with matrix ranking. And they will include all of the CIPs that come from staff, those community project requests, and then also any city council budget priorities. So at this point in time, we're looking for, are there any other priorities that we haven't shared? That haven't been listed from the community input that you as council want to make sure that staff look at through the budget process?
Counselor Camellia?
I'll just say, I don't feel like we've seen a really thorough list of everything we've planned to work on. I mean, the slides before were those just, those were just ideas from the community. I think we need to see, right, I'm looking around seeing faces. I think we need to see to make sure that the items we care about are on there a more thorough way.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, at this point in the budget process, we're asking, go back a slide. So we've received a whole bunch of requests from the community, street maintenance, parks, rec, open space, et cetera. Are there things that we don't have listed here that are important for you, the council, for us to dive into? I know Counselor Demott, you know, is very focused on the DISG golf course, you know, and so we've heard that and we understand that. We've also had community members that have come in and talked about a tennis facility. You know, if the council says, well, no way on a tennis facility, we're not going to do that. Tell us now so we don't spin our wheels on that.
I'll just say, I'm a little confused because I think there's a lot. I mean, we've mentioned up to the six months in meetings, right? There's a lot. And then the strategic meeting alone, that planning meeting, we all threw out, gosh, I don't even know, like dozens and dozens of things. Like this is not any, I could start going on my list, but I don't see it here. There's a lot.
Could you give us some examples? Because I'm, I'm at a loss as to what you're specifically referring to.
I'll let you start. How's that?
So I had things like helping to find affordable housing opportunities. I wanted to have via transit. I think I've been pretty vocal about that. Sorry, looking at my other one. I've said in the past, I'd like to see a roundup for water to help people pay their, those who can't pay their water bills. And I know with the strategic plan, we put emphasis on open space and specific recreational opportunities. But like those are the, just the ones that I'm finding of my, you know, I'm not as organized for that because I felt like I had already presented those.
And sorry, don't mean to interrupt. We have those captured as part of the policy objectives that you went through. And so that is part of the strategic plan, which is the foundation for which we will develop our budget, is those policy objectives. And then staff are now working on the specifics of how to meet those policy objectives. And when we submit our budget, we'll be, we will make sure that we connect our projects to the policy objectives that, that you agreed upon.
I'm almost saying. I just, I just want to clarify because I think what I'm hearing is those are in a different part and these are specifically community requested things. Am I missing something?
So I think we've captured the items that we discussed in the strategic plan. I think that captured most of what we mentioned, mayor pro town. So we've got, we've got those. We've got the community project requests. We've got the town hall feedback. Are there any others that are out there?
Okay. And I think that's where there's a miss is because this doesn't have like, for example, I know one that I've harped on the most is probably that I don't want to see four and a half percent on water. So I'll use this opportunity to harp on it again, but I wouldn't expect that to be in this. This would be more like, I guess, one of the things that I would think is there's a couple of different areas specifically where we've heard concern about speeding around school zones. So like, is there an opportunity to do some more of those flashing speed signs or things like that? Because I know there's a couple of areas where we've got constant complaints, ones around Mandalay Middle School. I feel like there's another one. But I guess that would be the only other thing. And I can't think off the top of my head. I know there were some other speeding areas that I would call out that, I don't know if that's captured somewhere on the list. And I think that doesn't have to be a expensive thing, but.
And since you bring up schools, the schools that were closed down, we still have flashing at Sheridan Green. And when you're exiting, now it's Eaton Street that the kids cross there. Or they're crossing at Harland to get to Ryan. And there's nothing that makes sense along that road. And that's the reason why. When the cops are there, they catch people because people know there's not a school over there. They don't know that maybe there's a school over there. And when we're exiting our own neighborhood, we don't see that there's a flashing light till you get down there. Because nothing's been put in the right place and it's been a year.
Yeah. And to that point, that was a specific one that I did ask about too, and I didn't, we haven't really got feedback because I think we were kind of watching. So like in the countryside Walnut Creek area, there are now where they have the bus stops, they're on opposite sides of like where the, the crosswalks are. They're not like located in a way that makes sense where the bus stops are now because the, you know, it's not the same schools. So that was another one that we did ask about when the schools were closing, if we could find that out. Because we figured there would be budget constraints around that. So I think that's good. And since she, the mayor brought it up, Stanley Lake to whoever's in charge of that light. Because in the middle of the night now, it goes to the green light to turn into Stanley Lake. And it doesn't usually even do that on the off season. So I've got stuck at that line about 12 times this last week.
Counselor Erin?
I think there's one thing we didn't mention is weeds. And I think we didn't notice them because it was earlier in the year, but it's getting summer. And some of these landowners are not cutting their weeds and they're getting really high, especially across Huron for me.
They're waist high.
Yes.
Independence, that's another speeding area.
That's really a fire hazard at some point if they dry out.
Counselor Rosati?
Yeah, it's, I'm looking at my list. It's hard to know without seeing. I think that's what we were trying to say. Without knowing what specific action items you are going to take from what we talked about already. Because a lot of those ideas were requiring funding of some kind. So I don't know how much of what I said in this planning you are working on. But, well, for example, the co-responder program to expand that, is that part, is that one of the items?
It is under, it's, it's one of the items we are considering and working, what the options are.
The homeless navigator program to expand that?
Same.
Court, the court resource navigator?
Same. Sorry, that's very short. Yes, we are working on all three of those items.
No, no, that was fine. I like the conciseness. The, the, so for the unhoused, there are several ideas there related to shower vouchers, laundry vouchers. Is that already getting considered?
So shower vouchers, shower vouchers have already been utilized through our homeless navigators. They offer those. We can see, get some additional stats and see if we can expand the program laundry that I like, we can ask.
Yeah, yeah, because the idea there was to expand it. I don't know if it will cost money to raise the temperature threshold to thirty two degrees from when we open up the emergency shelter.
There are some financial impacts. We've run preliminary data and we can include that for consideration. So that, that can be considered by city council if that's something we want to invest in and potentially shift resources from one program to potentially support that. But we have preliminary numbers that we're working on.
The LED study I had talked about. That will obviously cost money.
Can you expand on that one?
So to conduct a LED study, public education campaign, lead to the area around the airport. Now that morphed over time because we had that meeting. And what agency was that that said that they, that we can partner with?
Jefferson County. Jefferson County would do it.
Jefferson County.
Health Department.
Public, yeah, there, I mean, what's her name?
Doctor Story.
Doctor Story. Yeah, so that sounded really intriguing.
I think they have the funds to do it too, so.
To partner, so maybe we don't need to.
Like on social media.
If that study is what the status is.
And you have tennis center, I saw from the people, discounts for veterans, more discounts. I know we have them to expand the discounts for veterans and people with disabilities. Is that already in there?
Just for clarification, are you referring to our, like our recreation programs, water or all of the above?
All of the above.
Okay.
Just to see where the gaps are and then fill the gap. So we won't need it for everything, but I'm guessing there are some services that we provide that don't have the right amount. MPT mentioned via already, via mobility, so that's already there. Counselor Demott mentioned water rates. Mine is more targeted reduction of water bills. So similar lines of how can we really focus on those who need it the most to reduce the burden? I'm sure that will cost money. And all the housing stuff, of course, is like to incentivize tiny homes and to incentivize some of these things. Is that, that's part of the housing objective that I'm sure you're already building on?
And part of that is, and I know we have our director of community services, is the housing needs assessment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that there are specific items that will be built in based upon the feedback that we received from the policy level? For how we will objectively target our task wise built in. So I know that community services is already working on exploring it. What is the right fit? That's what the staff will look at and figure out what works for us and then present that and see if, again, if that's something we want to invest in versus something else. And what those trade offs may or may not be.
And as we know, housing is where jobs what?
Live.
That's right. Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of other things. To the point of speeding. Wherever I go, somebody is always running red light, like wherever I'm at in my car. I would love to see a case for streetlight cameras and or, I don't know, we get as cool as Morrison and just like, you know, catch me all the time. But if we, you know, I would love to kind of see what that cost might be or how we might kind of implement or start implementing that. I did not, this is new, but I remember that we don't have a membership to CC4CA anymore. So just looking at what that might, might be to redo that or get back engaged with them. They have been really helpful in the transit conversations. And so that's why I think that they could be of assistance to the community for this, you know, for expanding our transit voice.
Would you break down that acronym for me?
Oh, the, oh, God, Colorado. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't go down the wrong CC4A route.
Yeah, I don't think.
I was here.
Yeah, I know. I, I, but I, I think that they could help advocate for things that we want to have. So.
Always open the conversation. I think it was about twenty five, if I recall correctly.
And the last thing was, why did I shove chocolate in my face?
It's ten thirty at night.
Keep you awake.
Hello. To Counselor Rosati's question about the shower and laundry vouchers, I did remind me, we, we did a truck one time.
Yes, Bayard, Bayard, I believe. Bayard, great. Yeah, thank you. I remembered when I was in Parks Recreation Library, so we did have that.
Yeah, and I'm just, you know, like what would it be to increase that? Her story.
It stopped at, for some reason, outside of our control, if I remember right.
Oh, I believe you're correct. But we will confirm and if nothing else, close the loop on maybe why we stopped. And if it's an option to continue or if it's something that, again, was outside of our control, we can close that loop. Great memory.
Yes. So yes, on tennis. But, so. Dash cameras. I'd like to look at how much dash cameras would cost for our police department. I think that's something that protects both our officers and our residents. And then definitely keep in contact with our VADA about a potential partnering with a homeless navigation center. And. Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I don't say anything that's already been said. And then we talked about language access, you know, when it comes to sending out information in the city. Making sure that we have something printed in English and Spanish. But then the other areas like website and whatnot that we can expand even further beyond. So any, any way we can expand language access.
That's a quick, a quick question.
Yeah.
Do you mind? Sorry. The website, there is a current project to do a new website, right?
We'll have a new website by the end of the year.
Does that? So, sorry.
It's okay.
I can wait. I can wait till the end.
Okay. And then talking about vouchers, is there any way that we can get in contact with RTD? To see if we can't get bus vouchers for our unhoused? So that way they can get to the services they, they need?
We already do. We already have those.
Oh, okay. And then, let's see. Again, mentioned, going to mention the Pride Festival. Expanding solar, expanding solar gardens, city owned building rooftops. If we remodel and build fire stations, you know, adding solar gardens on top of those. And then also any way that we, because we approved an affordable housing project that had rooftop solar. So any way that we can incentivize, that I think would be great. Because then that's not something that we would be on the hook for, but it would still expand, you know, solar, which would be great. And then. I think, I think we're good. I think, I think I'm good.
Counselor Ireland?
So I had a question about the website because we talked about getting a separate one just with a calendar. So people know when the events are because they just get lost in our current website. Monthly calendar, weekly calendar of the events, because people are missing events, like our water bills. I've had people complain that when they get their water bill, it has events on it. It's already over. The event's already over that's on their water bill. Also, I got a survey. Not everyone got one, but I want to know how that pertains to what we're doing now. Are we using that information for this budgeting or what is that information for? It was a citywide survey.
Community survey.
What are we using that information for? What are we paying for that?
Oh, the, yeah, the statistically valid, yeah, community wide survey.
And how was it chosen who got one and who didn't? Because I know everyone didn't get one.
I, random. That's.
Five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, five thousand random addresses within the city to, to fit a sample size. I don't know that I could speak too much more than that. That's run out of our communications division.
And so, and people get a gift card if they give you, they get in a, drawing for a gift card if they send, just give your email or phone number. I just feel like that isn't fair to the rest of the community that we're giving out gift cards to get it back. Just saying.
Counselor Demott?
You had brought up the veteran. You had brought up the veteran rates, because we do that at the rec centers already, right? And I had asked earlier this year about potentially expanding that to first responders, so I'd like to look at that as part of the budget process. The other thing that you guys brought up that made me think of, ah, there was something else, but I don't remember what it is, it's too late, so.
You think of it, just write them a note.
Most everything on my mind, I think, has already been said, so thank you, everybody. I'm just going to say some of them again in a slightly different fashion. I mentioned it in my public comment earlier, the parking lot idea, I'll bring that up again here. I'd like to find a space in the city that is legal for folks living out of their cars to park, that they won't be harassed. And we mentioned, I was going to bring it up, but thank you, Mayor Protam, for bringing up the van. I was going to say that as well. If we can look into a van with showers and some porter potties and just look at what that expense might be if we had that hosted in the parking lot. And obviously, hopefully, it would be close to laundry where we can provide those services, but really looking at what that would cost would be great. And then also via transit, should already mentioned, but I want to make sure that's on there. And then I think this is coming, but I want to make sure it is, is a navigation center discussion.
Okay, awesome.
And then I will double down to Counselor Ireland's point on the website. Again, I wish we were more involved on that, I'd love to know what's happening with it because I feel like we have a lot of, you know, resident concerns about what it's going to look like and how accessible it is, but I'm glad it's happening. I hope we're getting some chat boxes on there. I'm hoping we can get to things in less than three clicks. I'm hoping for a lot of things, so hopefully that's going well. If there's ever a way that we can, like, get in on a work session to see progress or provide suggestions, that would be awesome. But, and also, security, I want to make sure that we're investing in our cybersecurity for the city, just make sure it's on there. And definitely doubling down again on the calendar. I agree, I actually brought that up just the other day. And connectedness between the departments and our front service desk, you know, the folks here walking in and just knowing what's going on. And I feel like there's some, if, once our website's working better, I think that'll fix everything, but making sure that they know about everything that's happening and where to go for what, you know, having us all be more informed. And then entertainment and recreation, we brought it up. I feel like there's more ideas that haven't, that I haven't said. I hope we're not missing disc golf, tennis, but I, I hate coming up with this on the spot because I feel like there's other, but anyway, that stuff. I agree with the CC4CA, thank you for bringing that up. Also, I think we're already doing this, but the zero skate boxes for residents, if we can offer, we are offering those.
It was done in May.
Oh, awesome, okay, at like a discounted price or something. That's all I can think of right now, I hope that's good.
Very helpful.
I'll make you smile. We're gonna turn Sheraton Green into a tennis, indoor tennis.
Oh, there we go.
Counselor Demat?
I have two things that I just, took me a second to remember. One, I, I appreciate staff's response about my question about citywide mailings. I still desire for a way to figure out how people know about that program because I heard that from more than one person at this last one that was attending the event but didn't know that they could buy a brick for their loved one that was a veteran. So, I think there's an opportunity there and I think that it's money well spent for us to be able to let residents know that they could honor their loved one's service at that facility. The other one, this is semi-personal. I played at Christopher Fields half for a really long time and I can tell you that the fees are getting, they get more every year and every year I can't believe how much we pay to play softball there and every year the rules get, in my opinion, more ridiculous. This year, they're going to be enforcing numbers on the jerseys or your shirts and we're told that it doesn't have to be fancy, but if you don't do it, you're going to be an out if you step in the thing. I gotta tell you, at, at the rates that we pay, some teams can't afford that. Go out and look what it costs to buy simple shirts. So, if we're going to do stuff like that and charge the amount of money that we charge to play at what is a very nice field, like, there's other ways to solve that. Like, I've played in sports leagues where they have pennies that people can put over that they borrow from the field that have numbers on them. There's ways that we can get around that because I feel like you're creating barriers for teams that can't maybe afford, or they're barely affording to play. I mean, if you figure, you know, eleven-person team with the, the rate that we're paying, and it's gotten a lot more over the last four years. Like I said, I, I've played there a really long time. So, the team I played with, I played with for over twenty years, not all in Westminster, but for at least the last ten, it's been in Westminster. And I just feel like, I would like the facility to look at that and figure out, you know, some more creative ways because it's, and it's almost gotten to be a point where like, there is friction between the management and the players and I feel like that's not the kind of environment that we want, especially with the amount of money that, that folks play or pay to play in that, you know, what is a very nice field. But I just feel like that's an area that we could do better if we're charging that much money. So, it's a budget thing potentially, so if we could look at ways that we could at least help folks out if their team can't go out and buy all their players jerseys with numbers on them.
Get some chalk.
Something, spray paint, I don't know, something.
Anyone else?
Finish that thought about, so about surveys. I think it was Counselor Demat when he asked about postcards, right? I'm very curious about surveys where it feels like this is a cost-cutting opportunity, but I'm curious where, what, in the, in the 2024 budget cycle or year, 2023, however you want to, in, in the past twelve months, how many surveys, what are, what were they, what were their use? You know, every survey should have a purpose, should have an outcome, should have a strategic alignment of some kind, we can't, we shouldn't just be putting out surveys. It seems to be, we do, we do a lot of them and they're all over the place and they're for different reasons. I'm curious what all those reasons are, maybe like one table of like, what the surveys were, how much each costs, the cost of each? Because I'm, because if that's an opportunity where we can streamline, then use that money to, or some of this other stuff, then that could, that's interesting. And if we're not spending much money at all, then maybe all this hoopla is for nothing, so that's also good to know, too.
Counselor Ireland?
I agree with Counselor Zadi. And just the dog park alone had three surveys. I don't feel like they were any value other than make the residents mad, so I would just like, have to know how much they cost, why we're doing all these surveys, what's, where we're getting out of them, because I just got a survey and I don't know what it's going to be used for, but it was very long. Just so, the ones, the rest of you didn't get them, it's like five pages long.
Do you have a, your?
Kenan?
Last thought, the Westy Foundation, I just, I want to, I hope that that's included in our budget as well as founding the director. I just, I think it's important because I think we've been asking for somebody to help connect us to the nonprofits and organizations in the area.
We already have one of those. I met her.
Well.
Well, yes.
We have a, we have an agreement for a certain amount of years that, that funds that, that they agree to.
Is that what's happening?
Yeah, so, real quick, if I could, so on June twenty-fourth, post-meeting, council presentation on updates to the Westminster Community Foundation. And then, I think we come back early July, yep, is the amendment to the current agreement that we have with them. So, on July eighth, so, you know, end of June through early July, we'll do all the updates we need to do with the Westminster Community Foundation.
Awesome, thank you.
The, sorry to interrupt, but, so when I was still the liaison to that, when we went through the strategic binding on the Legacy Foundation, I actually think I was the one who made the point that because they were trying to figure out how the foundation figures out what they're going to be when they grow up, because there's been a lot of change over the years. I brought up the point and the board agreed to come back to the city and ask, like, maybe we ask for a longer time because we were trying to transition, the, or the organization was trying to transition away from being on the city dime, which is the ultimate goal, that it's its own thing. But the board really felt that, that made a lot of sense to try to give the new director time to figure out with the, the director and the board to figure out what it was going to be and that's kind of, I think, what kicked that off for them to come back and ask for us to extend that out.
Yeah, thank you.
Then that will cost money.
Counselor Zadi was there for that also.
So, I, I joined the board as a board member when Counselor Demat was still the liaison. And I'm still on it now and the discussions, we rebranded it, new name and everything. Now, we're trying to figure out the fundraising strategy, a whole new paradigm of how we do that, but we need some more time before we can become subsufficient. So, this request in July will be, we need more money for Natalie, basically.
Anything else? Next?
I'd like to ask, our Policy and Budget Coordinator, James Finn, if we're going to come up and talk about the work we've been doing with University of Colorado Lead School of Business?
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protam, counselors, my name's James Imbrugge, Policy and Budget Coordinator. Go ahead and go on the next slide. The City of Westminster has partnered with the Colorado School, Lead School of Business for over four years. The Lead School of Business works with national clients, the state of Colorado and many other local governments within Colorado. They have the expertise and they have earned the trust of many entities. The full report has been attached to your agenda packet if you're interested in the complexities and the details of the modeling and the equations they use. They model three different scenarios for us, an optimistic, a baseline, and a pessimistic. And before we go into the future, I thought I'd just take a moment and pause and you can see that in 2023, their baseline to our actuals were only about one percent off, so the baseline's a really good way or viewpoint in the model to follow. They use a variety of variables to come up with their modeling and the City of Westminster does provide them with localized data as well that they input as they go through their different statistical equations. I'm going to take a moment and talk about the difference between the optimistic and baseline models. They have some changes to interest rates, they have some differences in employment rates, but the main driver between those two different scenarios is how much US real GDP growth there will be. And the optimistic model is a little bit stronger and in the baseline, it's a moderate growth. One additional factor, of course, is in the optimistic scenario, there's a little bit less geopolitical risk out there, which increases global trade, which thus drives more sales tax dollars. Now, those two models against the pessimistic scenario, where is, really, the pessimistic scenario follows a weaker economy and slower growth. Now, this chart outlines what they are modeling out into the future, but I'll take a moment just to remind you that we have them do this analysis on an annual basis, so those out years would change from year to year. So, with that, in 2025, staff is planning to build the proposed 2025 budget on the baseline projection. Because the baseline projection is the main projection that they present and it's been historically accurate and it does meet the guiding principle of stewardship and fiscal responsibility. And with that, I will take any feedback or questions.
So, when, and I'm sure it's in the package, so I apologize, but when were these created in like the most recent, like, how many months ago?
Yeah.
Because it feels like the economy in the last couple of months is shifting negatively in a way that people weren't really expecting.
Yeah, they got historical data from us as of April of this year and this report came out in May.
I just want to say, within one percent is extremely impressive, that's amazing, so, well done. And was that based on the baseline model last year?
Yeah, yes, it was.
And I assume that's the model that we usually choose, right? So, what happens with the optimistic? In years, we go optimistic or years we go pessimistic, like, can you give a little bit more context around what happens with that, with those dollars?
Yeah, definitely. If you look at the budget book, you'll see that there's general, or there's fund tables in there. And so, on years where we get more revenue than we normally do, that kind of goes to the bottom line and we can kind of use that for the, for next year's budget. On years that we are lower than what we're projecting, we do have reserve funds that we can dip into to offset that. But there are thousands of inputs into revenue and thousands of outputs into expenditures and how they all balance out at the end of the day and that's why it's important to have reserves.
No other questions? Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to invite up Paul Knippel, our Public Works and Utilities Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council. So, we want to just bring forward a proposal to maybe do some things, oops. Close some revenue gaps that we see with some fees.
About you driving.
I ran it right into the ditch. All right, I'm going to try again. Okay, so, this is, the next two topics here are in alignment with the strategic priority number five, which is resilient infrastructure. I believe you, we showed you this earlier this spring. I'm not going to go through that same presentation, but this is just sort of a reminder that we have various levels of condition of our pavement within the city. And these are some examples, excellent, good, fair, and poor. We have examples of all of those throughout the City of Westminster. Our overall rating is in the fair spot right now. This is a little bit of an indication, historically, the relationship between the condition of our streets, street pavement and the funding levels. And you can see from 2017 to 2019, we had some good increase. We started off fairly low, really, for the inventory that we have in 2017 and that, that level increased over the next two years and sort of kept the pavement condition about the same, around sixty-three to sixty-four. And then it dropped quite a bit there with COVID and then the subsequent year after COVID, there were some issues with asphalt availability and production and it continued to drop. And then in 2022, we had some savings from those prior years. We put that into the system and we saw, we began to see a rebound into 2000, where we are today, around a fifty-four. And these are just a couple of bullet points. Our overall, over that time period, that, that index, that condition index has fallen and we're, Westminster's right now in the bottom quartile of a hundred comparison cities. The accepted practice for street maintenance is to try to hit ten percent of your street network annually. That means that every ten years or so, you would get a treatment on the street, new surface or something of that nature. And we're, we're a little better than six percent of our inventory on an annual basis is what we're able to hit with available funding. Current funding for this year for asphalt maintenance is approximately nine point six million in this current fiscal year. And our, our models indicate that we need to be around sixteen million, really, to, to maintain where we are today. I think in the presentation that went out, I should note that what was sent out earlier, we had a little bit different statement on the second bullet point. That was to, to get us to a better rating with sixteen million. Sixteen million kind of helps us hold the line. And that's a pretty good delta between sixteen and, and nine point six where we are today. So, we're probably not going to close that all in one year or even a few years, if that would be the desire. So, we would propose that we, we come back as part of this budget process and present you with a few options about how we can incrementally maybe dial that up to, to at least keep up with inflation and maybe begin to add a little bit to it so that we can stave off a condition where the pavement really deteriorates a lot and then at that point, it's, becomes very difficult to, to recover. About a dollar of preventative maintenance is equivalent to ten to fifteen dollars of reconstruction cost, just as a comparison, so it's an investment. So, at this point, we're, if, if, for street improvement fees, we would take any input that you may have, any guardrails on, on this subject. But otherwise, we would bring forward some options and show you the methodology and give you some things to think about.
Go for Tim.
So, I remember this conversation, I think, ever.
So I remember this conversation, I think every customer gets charged six dollars regardless of their size or impact. So, I mean, I know we're gonna engage the business community, but, um, we never engaged the residential community, you know, on this fee. And so I just, you know, for, I just, uh, I, I feel like we should just impose the fee. Um, and, you know, I, I don't feel like a couple of dollars is worth the time to engage the business community. I mean, I don't know how big of a fee increase, but I can't imagine we're gonna, I don't know. If, if it's significant enough, maybe, but I don't know, from six dollars to ten dollars, I mean, unless it's, you know, really trying to capture their impact. Just a suggestion there.
It's a month or is it?
Goes on the water bill, it's on your water bill.
So it's every month?
Yes.
And it, so the roadway improvement fee is one of five funding sources that we have. It goes into, uh, into pavement maintenance, not big capital projects where we're rebuilding roadways. That comes from the general fund, but for pavement maintenance, we've got five funding fees. And this is about a third of that funding. The rest is external funding from counties and states and then, uh, street from franchise utilities. So this is about a third of the revenue that we have. I think that, that second bullet was really added just, uh, because I believe that staff presented some things, uh, last August and, uh, on, on the pavement, uh, on, on this subject and had some raw numbers related to trip generation. And that generated a very high, uh, fee for certain businesses that had a lot of, a lot of traffic. And, uh, but I don't think we would do that. We would try to bring something that's reasonable and that is, uh, uh, that we believe we can absorb with the community. And that's certainly a possibility. We could go out to the public. We could do that after we bring what our, we think to you all and you could advise if you wanted us to go out to the public at that time.
Okay.
If I could real quick, we have engaged, uh, the Chamber of Commerce on this topic and they get it and understand that there would need to be some kind of increase from what they're currently paying compared to a resident. So theoretically, you could see business, high-volume, uh, businesses pay more. Maybe residents even see something go down. I'm not sure what that would look like, we'd have to figure that out. But, you know, it's all about trip generation. You think about, you know, average, uh, residential trip generation is nine trips from your home each and every day. That's you leaving and coming home from work, um, you know, Amazon delivering something and leaving, um, the mail, mail, uh, mail, uh, mailman delivering something and leaving. I mean, you're at six right there and that's not running kids around or anything. Then you look at a grocery store and you're talking thousands of trips onto and off of that property and the roads around that property are going to get worn out a whole lot faster than that residential road. And so there should be something that makes sense from a, um, equity standpoint there.
Counselor Demont?
Just quick on that note, um, I'm, I'm in favor of us doing that. And part of that to me is equity to our residents. We've talked a lot about that across topics tonight because the people who come and shop here aren't necessarily people who live here, but yet they're using the roads that our residents do have to pay for. But I'm, you know, I agree, like, I don't wanna give them such a bigger chance at it as long as it's something that you're bringing back that makes sense to us. The other thing, though, I had to ask a question is, so when you talk about the sixteen million, in the past, it's been a problem where even specifically like, uh, those years prior and you kind of mentioned it where we had a problem getting asphalt or it was really expensive. There's been other, uh, pushback on, from staff, I don't know if pushback's the right term, but where we said, well, what if we give you another two million? And it was simply you couldn't, uh, you couldn't handle it if we gave it to you at that time. So like if, like, is that still gonna be a struggle? Like, so say you wanna be at sixteen million just to keep where we're at. If we found a way for us to say, add ten million to it so we could actually start making an increase, is there even a possibility to have the staff and the equipment and the material to be able to do that?
So I, I follow your question and going back a little bit. So one, I think, moving forward, at some point in time, there would be a staffing component for, for project managers and ex, and inspectors. And that's something we would talk about. I, I think some of those previous situations we have, we've had in previous years. If we were to add a million dollars in May or June, right? We've already set contracts with asphalt providers and so that's where we wouldn't be able to invest that, that paving season. So I think that might be what you're thinking of later in the year. When, uh, you know, when those providers of pavement have already executed contracts with all the municipalities and everyone else.
Came up with extra funds.
And we find extra funds, we can't always spend it that paving season. So this is something we would know far enough.
Well, that makes sense, but I guess to that, why didn't we throw it into the next year, did we?
We did.
Okay, that makes sense. So the other question that I had asked in the past that I haven't heard, and I mean, this is more into the weeds of what you guys do, but I still have never seen it come back, like, not that everything is true on the internet certainly, but there are different technologies in roadways. And it seems like, you know, I'm sure we're utilizing some of them, but like, are we continuing to look at that as far as like different, um, materials, not always doing, you know, the, the same standard stuff? Because, and the reason I ask is how, how do we get out of the hole? Like, if we can't buy our way out of the hole, like, how are we trying to be more efficient or find longer lasting material? Or, you know, how are we being innovative in, in our approach to it so that, you know, we are improving the, the road condition? Not just by throwing money at it?
One thing in twenty-four, we're doing that we, we're doing more residential local streets than we have in the past. And that's a big part of the inventory. And we've focused past several years primarily on arterials and, and major collector roads. And those, those numbers have gone up. Our lowest scores are in the neighborhood, so we're gonna try to hit those, which would bring everything up overall in the city. That's just sort of how we distribute what we're doing. It's not necessarily a new technology. Asphalt is fairly basic. The main thing is you wanna keep water out of this, out of the subgrade. So we need to focus on the, the least expensive ways to fill those cracks and to put seals on top of the roadway.
Well, and, and I guess that's my question. And I don't know how feasible some of these things that I've seen are. I mean, I follow a lot of the, I'm an IT guy, so, you know, it's all about new innovation. So I've seen a lot of different things from both like parking to roads where they're using different materials or methods so that the water runs through, through it differently and supposedly allowing it to not do the things that, you know, we try to prevent with all the chip seal and the things that you guys do to the road. So I'm just curious that like, what do, what do our teams do to try to watch that new technology? Because obviously it is pretty standard and pretty old school the way they do it, but that doesn't mean there aren't new things coming out. And how, how are our, how is our city trying to look at those? Do people go to like, I mean, is there a road like show that people go to or?
There is, and there's plenty of vendors that wanna sell us all kinds of
No pun intended.
Ways to do it. And, and some of that, some of those things depend on how you build the entire section of pavement. And we've already built it, now we're just trying to keep it. And, um, that, that's some of the technologies, certainly the, the drain through kind of thing is, is, uh, is good if you can put it in upfront. And I know that's just an example.
Well, and I guess some of my concern in, I mean, and I don't know how everybody's gonna accommodate. If everybody really starts to go into these electric cars as fast as they do, those are a lot heavier. So that's gonna be more, I mean, that's always, the conversation around trash was always the heavy trucks. And, I mean, these electric cars are super heavy vehicles. So, um, you know, I just wanna make it at least part of the discussion. It's not something we're gonna solve this year, but I brought it up in the past and I'll continue to as long as I'm here because I just, I know there's other technologies. And, and I guess a part of you alluded to, part of the challenge is if we're already using a certain technology, it'd probably be really expensive. But if there are like roads that are new or that do are at the point where they totally have to be replaced, you know, I would just think it would make sense for us to try to see if there's a, a different way to, to tackle it. But, um, thank you for humoring me.
Counselor Zadi?
Thank you, and, um, I think that was a really good point about the innovation. Not gap, I don't know if we have a gap or what other cities are doing. And I'm curious, I'm also curious where, where we are with that. Related to what City Manager Free Tag was talking about, I think MPT talked about this many times on, you know, the existing flat fee that we have is regressive, right? It's, I think I mentioned to, sorry, to the group here, that what I, I visited a senior center and they're getting charged, they don't drive at all. They're getting charged the roadway improvement fee and they complained about, many of them were like, what did, you know, their, the bills are already really high. I would definitely be in favor of this more, this more equitable system that shifts the burden to the commercial trucks and heavy vehicles that we know are the ones really impacting. Because if you really compare residents driving with these trucks that go through these thousands of operations each day, it's really, it's, it's like, the impact from residents is probably five percent relative to all these commercial trucks that are really the ones that are degrading the road. So having one fee for everyone, that, that's very regressive and it's part of this cost of living crisis that we have that this is an unnecessary fee for most of our residents probably. And we need to increase the fee for these businesses that are, and it's not even the best small businesses, it's the corp, big corporations, right, that have the equipment and operation capacity to, to do this kind of impact to the roads. And my last point, I completely forgot, so, there you go.
Counselor Ireland?
Um, I know residents are struggling, but so are businesses. I have a friend whose husband owns a FedEx trucking company that mostly does Amazon deliveries and he's not making hardly any money right now. With all those deliveries, because Amazon is not increasing, but they pay him. And so he's, he's not making anything and he's working his tail off. So I'm not saying businesses are doing any better than residents.
Well, Amazon's doing great.
Amazon's doing great, but they're not sharing the wealth with the actual drivers. So we have to be careful of that too. So I think we put some of them out of business if we fee them to death.
Not Amazon.
Not Amazon, but.
They'll be fine.
Counselor Carmelina?
I'll just start with, I hate to put you on the spot and perhaps I'm wrong on this, but I'm pretty sure when we discussed this early in the year, the number was fourteen million. And so I just wanted to hone in on that, maybe the numbers changed?
It, it, yes, it, I think, I have to go back and look. It's fourteen, fourteen million is what I had calculated last time. Our model says sixteen million. So our folks that run these things corrected me earlier this week and said, no, it's, it's actually sixteen. So that isn't, this isn't a precise science. And so I'm
I understand.
In, in an instant order of magnitude, it's well beyond what we have right now. So I, um, yes.
Hate to put you on the spot, I just had to, I'm like, I know it was fourteen. And I'm just over here, you know, looking stuff up because why not? And, um, I'm just gonna talk about this. I looked up new technology in pavement and apparently there's something called permeable pavement. And it's supposed to be good for runoff and more environmentally friendly and more cost effective. So I'm just gonna say that out loud and see where the city goes with it. I don't know if it's something we can do or not, but, um, it's interesting, so. Yeah, I'll let you look into it.
That sounds a lot like
That is, that is the
Oh, yeah.
I just didn't remember what it was called.
Awesome. I'll get a fist bump over here.
That's great. You, you know, if, if you do that and it doesn't rain terribly heavy, then you don't have a lot of water on this, on the surface of the roadway. Makes it safer to operate as well. But we're, we, we, we're doing what our companion cities around are doing in terms of pavement maintenance. But I, I, I I have, I have, uh, regular meetings with my counterparts in, in, in multiple cities all around Westminster and we discuss these things. And so I've actually got one this week and I'll bring it up.
Awesome.
For me, fees, I, I hate them. Because my true water, this comes with the water bill. And so people complain about their water bill. My water bill, if I was just paying my water bill, would be twenty-eight dollars plus some change. But I pay fifty-six because of stormwater, roadway, and then the meter charge that just keeps going up. So people don't have a choice with those and I wish we had a different way. I, I hate them on the water bill because it skews the water bill. And, um, so I, I would have to know the number because I, I, I said no to a dollar last year, so. I mean, it goes on there, it's forever there and they keep raising it.
Exactly.
Can we change the, like, you've asked for this for years. What can we do to change, separate, make the water bill pure, pure water?
Well, I guess it's, you know, it's a matter of semantics. It's really not a water bill, it's a municipal utility bill. And I mean, I went through that with my former community, you know, we went from the Janesville Water, uh, Bill to the Janesville Municipal Utility Bill, the J-M-O-P. And it had fire protection, it had, uh, stormwater, water, wastewater, and in that community sanitation, because we did sanitation. So, um, you know, you got all those, all those fees in there, which are user fees, you know. And so you use the service, you pay the fee. And the fact whether it's twenty-eight for water or fifty-six all in, it's all those things that you're paying for that we run as enterprise funds, um, where, you know, you're not allowed to not cover your expenses. You have to collect enough revenues to cover your expenses, so that's just the reality. But we could go through a brand, a rebranding of our quote water bill to a municipal utility bill and, you know, but that's gonna take probably a, a good long time for people to kind of wrap their arms around. But it really is, it's just a compilation of those fees for service based upon your use of our enterprise funds. And I think the roadway improvement fee is really the city started to go down the, uh, idea of running a transportation utility, which really is again, based upon chip, trip generation, based upon your property type, you pay a different, uh, fee, you know, because of the number of trips that are coming in and out of your property, so.
Make a quick point on that. I, I think that you're, the city manager's right, but I think this is a thing that the city actually has made some improvement in my time on because the, those lines on the bill used to be even more vague than they are now. I, I feel like that is an exercise that's worthwhile because I think if you were a lot clearer about what those are for, people would understand. And one thing that we've kind of went backwards on that didn't help, it helps on one hand, but hurts on the other is now we have, you know, the water portal. And that's where you go to pay to all these things. So like a simple rebranding of what, what that really is, I think probably it would go a long way and it goes to the, our, uh, strategic portion around transparency in my mind because I think people do lump it in because it is their water bill and they're not, some people auto pay. So they don't really even know, they just know, oh, my water bill is this much and I wasn't in town. Like, I can't tell you how many emails I've got where people are on vacation and they get the bill that's still. But I, to me, I think that's a worthwhile spend of our time just so that people are clear. And I think then it's also on us as a, you know, as elected body to say, you know, it's not really just a water bill, it's also these things. And then we can make those decisions and around what's on there. But I think that that's the right exercise to have in my mind.
I agree with that.
I think that's a good point on transparency.
So is everybody a yes? Yes. You don't have my yes, but you have the rest.
Okay.
We'll do some options and show them to you. So the roadway improvement fee is a six dollar charge. And then the next one here is also a current six dollar charge for, for a resident. So, uh, we, we discussed, a couple of months back, we discussed pavement. We haven't really gone through what the stormwater utility is. It was an enterprise fund, uh, set up for stormwater utility, meaning it's got a dedicated source of revenue and certain purposes and services that it delivers. That fee right now, that's six dollars, covers, uh, our, our city's compliance with the state stormwater discharge permit. This is a lot of, it has to do with a lot of the silt fences that you see around construction sites out, out in the field. Uh, we have a lot of stormwater retention ponds that have aquatic life in it that are meant to filter, filter stormwater runoff, things of that nature. And so there's a long permitting process and we have staff that, um, that are dedicated to, to keeping us in to keeping us in compliance with that. There's also a, but the biggest part of the revenue and the expenses of the utility is keeping up with our capital projects, which are primarily creek, creek stabilization, erosion prevention, and then drainage maintenance, which is the piping system under the roadways that collects rainfall and brings it to the creek. And there's also a piece of floodplain administration. The city is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Those residents that their mortgage, their, their lenders determine they're in the floodplain, they have, they're required to get floodplain insurance, they, they need to be in a city that has, that's part of the program. And it takes minimum steps to keep people from building or rebuilding in a floodplain. And then development review is, is part of the, part of the utility, what goes into that. The current, current funding for all this is about 4.4 million a year in revenue, it's fairly stable. Again, it's roughly $6 per resident, and then there's, and it's a little bit different, it's based on a per square foot of impervious cover for, for commercial buildings. So, it comes out a little bit more every month than $6 for, for commercial properties. But out of that 4.4 million, roughly 2 million annually is dedicated, more or less, in any given year, to joint projects with Mile High Flood Control District, which is a regional watershed-based organization that works, partners with cities for, for drainage ways through, that, that cross political borders. So, a big chunk of that 4.4 goes to that. We have a considerable backlog of projects. I, I don't have a list of them to present to you tonight, I can certainly do that over the next 10 years. A lot of those, most of that, not, about, about 80% of that is things that we would do with Mile High. And so, some of that money would be paid for through Mile High Flood Control District, but not all of it. This is just sort of the raw number of projects that, that we have. And then, the other thing is that we, there's really, there's no reserve funding. So, if we have some sort of a catastrophic slide of a creek bank that gets into a trail, or gets into another piece of infrastructure, or we have some sort of a flooding event, that we, we just don't have a reserve available for that, it would have to come from some other source with the city. And so, similar to the street fee, we would propose some options to be brought back to the council for your consideration as part of this budget process, and we would make some adjustments incrementally over the next several years. And I think part of the discussion would be, we would need to show you what those, what that money would be applied for, and, and establish the reason for it. I've kind of stated it here, but I would feel better to bring to you sort of examples of what we would apply any funding to. And, so, and again, we have the statement about engaging the business community, that's, that's kind of based on some past experience that I think we had, and that's something that we could certainly do, business or resident community, if we wanted to do that.
Counselor Ireland?
So, is the silt fencing, like, the Uplands put up, is that the city paying for that, or is the Uplands project, or the Uplands developers?
Uplands pays for it, but then we have staff that are watching that stuff. So, when we had, we had some problems a couple of times, we had the staff out there that next Monday morning with the, ready to essentially, well, they, they got them into compliance pretty quick, so. But that, what you see belongs to that private development.
So, if they have, like, if there's damage, or they had lots of mud go into the drainage system, who's paying for that?
That, that's on Uplands to clean up.
Okay.
And we, and we would hold them to that. Would rather it not happen in the first place.
Because I know a $1,000 fine is not a big deal to them, so, but it is a, you know, if it costs more than that to clean up, they better be paying it, not the taxpayer.
Yes.
Everybody okay with this?
Yes. I mean, it sounds inevitable, so I think so, but it seems hard to say one way or another when we don't know the amount.
Yes.
So, we're right now, we're just agreeing to have proposals brought forward.
Make it sooner than later.
Okay.
Don't back us into a corner.
Right.
Because I might tell you, it's not taken out of the general budget. I mean, that's where the money's coming from, so, anyway.
And, and Mayor, actually, that, that reminds me of a, a point I, I should have made. We're targeting July 29th to come back for, for those proposals.
And you have one proposal that is one option of no change? With each proposal, each proposal will have a no change for all these fees?
That can be an option.
I assume?
Sure.
Anyone else? Next?
I think.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, she was hiding her hand.
She does that. Yeah, I would want to see what it's for. I was just going to make the point, because right off, I would probably be a no, but it just depends, without seeing what it is, and how much it is, and what we're actually paying for it. I could, my mind could be changed, so.
I'd like to also know how much, you know, we have in our general fund. That would be nice to know.
What else do you need? We're done. See you tomorrow.
I do have the next steps, but you can read those on your way.
What's Slide 35? It says questions.
Questions.